Good morning, everyone. We are here for our budget workshops. For two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget year, and I'd like to say welcome to everyone that's here. I know that we pulled y'all away from y'all's busy schedules. It's your normal job to come in here and present your budgets to the board, but we appreciate y'all being here. I would ask you if you have a cell phone or anything that makes noise. If you would put them on silent or vibrate, please. And also, I've asked Commissioner Hartley to open us up in prayer, and he'll do the pledge also. Before we start our meeting. It's gonna be a long day today. Y'all welcome to stick around with us till eight or nine o'clock tonight if you want. Or y'all can go back to your jobs if you want to. And with that, Commissioner Hartley, if you'll open us.
Dear Reverend Arthur, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for our blessings. Lord, heavenly Father, go with us as we serve the people of our county. Lord, heavenly Father, give us wisdom and help us to make the right decisions. Lord, heavenly Father, bless our county. Bless the people, Lord. Keep us all safe. Watch over and protect our schools, Lord, as we start this new year. Lord, heavenly Father, we ask you to just guide our county and guide her and have peace in our county, Lord. And help us to keep, keep you in our thoughts at all we do, Lord, heavenly Father, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you, sir. Now, we have a couple new commissioners with us here today, and they're gonna get broken good today, so. What we will do is we'll let the, uh, we'll be following down this list. Is this where we're gonna go and order this on this list?
No, sir. It's different. What she had on the screen is different than this one, by the way.
I need a printout of what is on the screen.
That printout is accurate.
Yes, it's accurate.
Should be supervisor, election, tax, legislature, property appraiser, clerk, P C C M C, then chair of office.
Is this for the whole day?
Yes.
That's, that's different than what was in the agenda packet.
Yes, sir. There, there should be a revised one in your agenda packet. Yeah, the agenda packet is right. You should have a, a, a correct line in your agenda packet.
From yesterday.
Agenda packet, this, that's what was in my agenda packet. So if you don't mind, please give me one that is accurate.
We'll make sure everybody's got the right one, but yes, sir. That's about accurate.
Okay. We'll start off. If the supervisor of elections is available and ready, Mr. Chris.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good. How about y'all?
Doing good.
Um, so we'll dive right in. Uh, basically, I have no new requests. We do have one election next August, of course, and a November election where some advanced expenses are required. For our personnel expenses, uh, we did some estimated adjusted cost of living increases. And then the minimum wage increases for poll workers and part-time workers. So you'll see those increases there. In our operations, of course, our office relies heavily on technology and equipment. We've had industry increases across the board. Uh, we have some postage increases, um, 'cause we have more mailing due to petition law changes. And we continue to upgrade our equipment as it ages out. Um, some of our equipment's pretty old. So that's our, our big expenses and big increases. Overall, we're asking for a four point seven percent increase in the budget from last year. Got any questions?
I can't get one of these things. I'm gonna make sure that it's. Sorry.
I'm good.
Keep, continue. I'm sorry.
I'm actually finished.
I already finished. So your total increase, your change was four point seven percent, which is thirty-six, six thirty-eight?
Yes, sir.
And that's for your elections and staffing and stuff like that for elections this year?
Operations costs with our equipment and stuff.
As far as your normal costs remain the same?
That's right. Yes, sir.
Chris, and that is booked with a three percent salary increase?
That is. We went ahead and calculated that in there.
And they say three percent then?
Yeah, he, he's already booked the count. This being that three percent increase.
Three percent increase. Any other questions or comments for Chris? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
You're welcome to stay around if you'd like.
I gotta beat the desk a little.
Yeah, I hear you. All right. Next item on the agenda is a Baker County tax collector. How are you doing today?
I'm good. All right, commissioners and chairman, thank you for allowing me to be here today. I'm Amy Ducker. I'm here to present the Baker County Tax Collector's Budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. So we'll do the same thing. We'll dive right in. So on mine, if you'll turn, um, I, I think y'all got my whole budget in there, but page eleven is, or they're not really numbered, but it's the eleventh page, and it's, um, justification sheet fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. If y'all wanna get to that. But I'll go straight down that, and that'll be the changes from last year's budget and justification as to why. So I'm gonna start right off with, um, the biggest line item on here, which is adding two employees, um, in the tag and title driver's license department. I will read off a little bit of what I've sent to the Department of Revenue, but just to kind of preface that. So we have just over this last year, we've had a twenty percent increase in, um, tag and title. I mean, driver's license customers, right at a fifteen percent over the last couple of years, and tag and title customers. And if anybody's been in our office, they can see that. Um, we are, you know, it's been a big change. But we've also had sustained growth over the last few years, so, um, and actually, that twenty percent after we got our July numbers in is twenty-two percent over last year's numbers. So I'll, I'll read a little bit of what I sent to the Department of Revenue as the position justification. This sustained growth has placed significant strain on our current staff, resulting in longer processing times, customer frustration, and increased employee stress and burnout risk. To maintain service quality and operation efficiency, I am requesting two new employees in this department. These additions will help us address the increased volume, ensure compliance with processing standards, and provide the high level of service that our community, community expects and deserves. The next one is a small increase in hourly wage on a part-time employee. And then our special pay, it actually went down from last year. This includes, we do certification pay. Send, um, employees after they've been there two years to go through certification training through the Department of Revenue. At that time, they get a two thousand dollars. It's about a year it takes them to do it, but it's a two thousand dollar increase in pay. That actually did not change from last year. What did change is we had a payout last year from, um, a long-term employee that went in there. So, um, um, that went, that went down quite a bit. FICA, the increase is due to, would be due to the two new employees with their salaries. The, the, these other three are, um, the, the next, actually, four are our retirements. So the official retirement went down. Um, employee retirement would go up with state guidelines and the two new employees. Senior management and drop, kind of flip-flop. We had a senior management employee enter into the drop, so drop, uh, went up, senior management went down. Life and health, that's our increase, um, you know, that we're gonna have this year based on the numbers that we've got so far.
Can I interrupt real quick? What, what were those numbers?
I'm sorry?
The life and health. What did they come out to?
Well, I didn't, I didn't do a straight sixteen percent. I did it based on the employees that took out, uh, family coverage, the ones that took out. So I actually took the employees based on what individual coverage.
Your actual.
Yeah, what our actual cost. I do mine a little later in the year. Most of theirs were due June first, so I'm not due to August first, so I usually have the numbers. So it wasn't just a straight percentage that I did.
The spreadsheets were, um, health are in the budget work, I mean, excuse me, in the agenda packet, 'cause that is an item that we'll present later today. So if you'd like to see how those rates are structured, you can.
That's fine. Okay. Sorry about, thank you.
That's okay. So we did have an increase, a small increase in our accounting software on the E D P. We had contractual, that, that went down. Where we, we purchased a queuing system, and because now we're just gonna be doing maintenance costs every year, it went down. Postage, you know, that, that went up this year, and, and the increase that we send out goes up. Our legal advertising went down slightly. I just take it back to the year before every time, so it had went down a little bit. Education, we don't have any employees that were sent to certification school this year. And then the final item in capital outlay would be to put in two new workstations for the employees I've asked them for, so. Any questions on any of that? It's about a four percent increase, um, and then the total is down at the bottom from last year.
Well, did you calculate any increases?
So I did do that. Um, I didn't know which total, uh, so I've got, I, I can give this to y'all, but I did a.
That's, that's not in this number, though, right?
No, it's not in this number. So a three percent would add eighteen, nine oh five, a four percent would add twenty-five, two oh nine, and a five percent would add thirty-one, five ten, and I can give that.
Yes, I need to get copies of that and get to each of, each, each of the board members if you can.
Okay.
Get Kayla to come in here. And get us, get us copies of that for, so we don't have to write all this stuff down. She's already got it wrote down.
Yeah.
She'll present that to, it'll, it'll help us. And I don't see the totals. I see on the, I was looking for on the screen, the percentage and the total.
So that would be, if you'll go to over to schedule.
She's doing copies right now, so.
Okay. Yeah.
Just a minute, she'll get us to that.
I'm sorry. I thought y'all had that on y'all's, but.
We don't have.
So if you'll go over on the bottom tabs, Cheryl, to, uh, I think this is a justification sheet, general justification. So that is all those numbers.
Yeah, I need to see the total number and the percentage.
Okay, so that, so there's your total number, and if you'll go back to.
That's the total increase?
Yes, total increase.
Does the incre- increase include the three percent or any of those numbers?
No, it does not.
So it's gonna be the.
And then if you'll go back to, um, that second page, uh,
So your total.
Exhibit A. There's your total.
Four point eight. Okay. That's what I was looking for.
And of course, that, that big, the, uh, capital outlay, that would not be, that would decrease. Normally, we only have about a thousand dollars in there, so this would be just to set up the, uh, so that is not a sustained, um, you know.
But we're talking about if adding a three percent increase is gonna bump that four point eight up about two percent. So from about just under five percent up to about a seven percent increase.
Yeah. I wasn't sure what.
Yeah.
Increase y'all were actually, you know, discussing, but I did it all three ways.
And this increase includes your two new employees?
It does.
Or you're just gonna bring in, you already figured that in?
I did, I did figure that in, because I did it based on their, um, so when I did it, I did it just based on the salaries, so.
So I'm, you're on your up, on your up costs, basically, is employees and.
That's right.
Your insurance, three percent raise is not included, postage, which.
That's right.
Retirement was a net negative anyways.
It did.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of them were. There were three. There were, I mean, there's four columns.
The four, the four of them was a net.
Yeah.
Negative six thousand.
We had some decreases in retirement. I think that's the first year in a long time we've had that, and then.
And you have payout, so you got cheaper people.
What's that? That's right. That's right.
So two new employees and insurance, basically?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments, Miss Amy?
Okay, my other thing is, is I'm supposed to be here this evening for dual certification. Last year, I think Rich, um, read that off, and I just wanted to make sure that y'all were good, 'cause I think the resolution is done.
Yes, we're on digital.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know if I would be back, because I have an appointment in Jackson. Okay, all right. So, um, that's something y'all have been doing every year, just in the event that that needs to be utilized, so.
Yeah, it's on the agenda for now. We'll take care of it.
Okay, all right.
If you don't make it back, we'll hold you accountable.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thanks. Okay. Item number three, which is the property appraisers, Mr. Tim. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank y'all for all that you do and putting up with us. Basically, what I've got here is the justification sheet. And it changed a little bit from when we submitted it. The, um, we'll, we'll start at the top and go down. The first column tells what it is. Second column is what we submitted. Third column is, uh, some, uh, the changes and the differences would be the fourth column. Of course, the first column is annual salary rate adjustment for two positions there of four thousand eighty-seven dollars. Special pay is the certification pay when each one of them gets certified. For the first time in the history of the property appraiser's office since I've been there, every employee of the office, including the property appraiser, is certified. So, um, we, we pride ourselves in doing that, and that's something that I make mandatory when they get hired. And all of them now are certified in the office, so. The, uh, next one is the FICA, uh, the retirement, official employees, senior management positions. That's one of the changes. When we submitted it, um, it was a hundred and twenty-two, and it went down, um, from the department sent it to us, two thousand one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So the difference of two thousand and seven dollars, so that one went down a little bit. The next one is the health insurance. When we submitted it, um, it was, um, at fifteen percent, and now it's at eighteen percent. So that, that one went up just a little bit. The next one is what we call our E D P, which is our K M A system that we use to appraise all of our properties with. We had an increase this year in our maintenance of six thousand dollars. We didn't take that just 'cause they sent it, so at the time of this submittal, it was six thousand bucks, but we went back and negotiated with them, and we got it down two thousand dollars, uh, in the meantime, so we got that one down a little bit. The other ones there are, um, the, um, appraisals, mapping, and postage. We had a little bit of, uh, changes, uh, in some of those. And then, so the total difference from what we submitted to today is a hundred and sixty dollars difference, which is a four point two three percent increase, uh, on the total.
Tim, did you put any employee raises or anything in?
I did not.
That build into it?
We normally don't. Um, we have, I, I just calculated that number while we were sitting back there for just the, their salary part, but not the FICA in those parts, but that would be about twelve thousand dollars.
And that's on a three percent?
Yeah, I'll get her to figure that out and, and get it back to y'all, but we don't, we don't ever put that in there, so.
It's just for our.
Yes, sir. Plan and purposes. But I'll get her to get that all figured out and get it back to Ms. Cheryl.
You said twelve thousand for three percent?
I'm sorry.
Twelve thousand for three percent?
Yes, twelve thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and seventeen cents. But that's just for the salary part, not the.
Yes, sir.
Not the withholdings and those things in there.
Four point two three for forty-four thousand, so twelve thousand, we're gonna be about five, we're gonna be a five half percent increase total.
Any other questions for Tim?
So basically, your, uh, budget went up with insurance costs and stuff like that?
Insurance is the major, I mean, that's the majority of it.
Your biggest?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Insurance and a couple raises, that's it?
Yeah, sir.
Insurance and a couple raises is the majority of it?
That's right.
Everything's employee related. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right. Go to item number four, Madam Clerk.
Good morning.
Good morning, Stacy. How are you?
So, well, I'm good, honestly.
I know. You've been a long day.
I found out something to you that I received yesterday, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but we're fixing to have a change in finance. So what I'm requesting today is that you can give me some time to get with the county manager. We're gonna try to do a little restructuring finance, and I didn't have time. I got that, I filed standard about eleven o'clock yesterday, so. Kind of kind of figure salaries and what the plan's gonna be, but I have spoke with the county manager. Gonna try to do a little bit of a change when it comes to finance, and like I said, yesterday, I had a jury come in, still got one today, and I did not have time to do the research as far as salaries and kind of getting a plan as far as. I have reached out to several counties, and to be honest with you, I know y'all say to do that, but everybody does stuff so differently. No matter what size county you have, they do everything totally different, so sometimes the clerk's over stuff, sometimes the county manager's over stuff. There's not a consistent, I promise you. And like I said, you can check behind me, and I'm perfectly fine with that. So I do have some people kind of getting me some ideas as far as my county, my size, and like duty-wise, what we're gonna do. So like I said, at this time, I just need some time to figure out what we need to do. There's no way I can give you a budget today. There will be, of course, an increase with health insurance, which is very minimal, because you guys don't pay a lot of my sta- my staff salary. But like I said, once we kind of figure out what we plan on doing as far as finance, that's gonna determine the clerk-to-the-board budget, so. And I don't know what else, you know, I can do at this point.
Do you have a, like, an estimated time that you would have something back to Sarah?
Well, she, she had stuff going on yesterday. I had stuff going on yesterday, and, um, we did not get an opportunity to talk. So, uh, we have kind of spoke back and forth. Um, we're gonna have to add finance staff to, to the current situation. And so, like I said, I honestly, depending upon knowledge, depending upon education, I personally, uh, interviewed two people for, uh, accounting positions for the clerk. And I have yet to find anybody that understands government accounting. So I've reached out to my CPAs that are currently helping us, and anybody that's asked are having issues finding people to do, you know, finance services or, you know, even accounting, not just necessarily a CPA. So, um, like I said, at this point, it's just gonna take some digging, trying to find out what's out there, and kind of get a rough guesstimate of salaries. And like I said, but the going rate of accountants or, you know, finance people are rather high, so we're just gonna have to kind of dig in and see what we can find.
Ms. Sarah.
Our intention is to, to meet before the end of the week.
Yeah. Ms. Sarah, what I would ask, if you could, and this is nothing we're gonna hold you to, if you could get last year's budget. Our new commissioner's gonna see.
You guys have it?
As long as we have our last year's budget, we can go ahead and figure the, uh, insurance end of that, all the overages.
Yes, sir.
End of that, and then we, we understand that there might be some tweaks to that budget because of having to hire staff and do what you have to do to manage the clerk's office.
Mr. Chairman, you do have this year's in front of you with a three percent raise calculated, but of course, it'll have to be revised after Stacy and I.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Speaking with some other clerks, I know that, and I spoke with Sarah about this, as far as a, a budget person. A budget person is not gonna be a full-time, full-year, I mean, for, as a full-time position. That's gonna be, you know, four or three, four or five months out of the year, which is not gonna be a constant. And I mean, it's gonna be steady for, of course, this time of year, but like I said, as far as the rest of the year, unless there, that's gonna be basically a, a part-time position. So we're gonna have to determine as far as with her and myself, how we wanna play that out too. So like I said, any suggestions, we're game on, any kind of suggestions that you might have. But like I said, every clerk's office does everything differently, and like I said, we just are gonna have to see what's best for us.
Is it, the budget cycle, is that something that you could bring a, say, a certified CPA in to help with the budget? And that, and that, and you'd work under contract with them instead of working through an employee?
Yes, they're sort of like, like Clerk Harvey said, said, there's certain times during the year where there's a heavier workflow for specific items. And I think, you know, she and I have talked about it, we're open to, to anything like that that may be able to help, you know, um, the process move along, and that would be at a, at a reduced cost to the county instead of having someone full-time just for those things. We are, we're gonna sit down and we're gonna look at it, um, and see how we, you know, think that my, my function best works, so.
Kind of keeping them on a retainer or something and using them as needed.
And you could do that. A lot of clerk's offices don't have CPAs in office. They do retain them throughout the year. They have either like two accountants, finances. They do one for the clerk, one for the county, and then they have a CPA to kind of clean up the parts that they aren't quite sure on. And that's what, Washington County is exactly the same size as Baker County, right on I-ten, and that's kind of what they do. She has a retainer for CPA. He comes in this time of year, kind of, you know, helps them with audits, helps them with budget, whatever, whatever's needed.
Sure.
And so, but it's not something that's needed all the time.
Right, right.
But they do keep, they have a retainer on a certain CPA, um, company, and they, they maintain that throughout the year, so.
Yes, ma'am.
One more ask is, we're gonna have a meeting, 'cause I've had Tyler involved in the whole total process. I would like him to be included in that meeting. If he can, if he's possible. If not, he can be on a phone call. You don't have to personally be there, but he can be, he can listen in and he can give updated advice and help.
Sure.
And if that would be okay with you and Ms. and the clerk.
I have no problem with any help whatsoever, 'cause at this point, it's gonna be a whole nother. It's gonna be a restructure, and that's what our plan's been all along. We had planned on restructuring finance anyway. So the fact of the matter is just trying to get the right people with government knowledge, not just an accounting degree, 'cause I had two, and it didn't work. So I gotta get the right people who understand government accounting, because if you don't, you're wasting your time, and that's a lot of effort on people's part to train. And like I said, I'm not gonna have that, so I'm gonna have to have somebody boots on the ground, who knows what they're doing, and kind of come in and kind of take over.
What I find sometimes is better to have a fresh set of eyes and a fresh set of ears when you're trying to restructure. And then you, you're already on the right path, reaching out to other governments. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. We just need to do what's best for Baker County.
Exactly. And that's the plan, and like I said, once we get a better idea, like I said, I've reached out to Hardy County, Washington County, or exactly Baker County, I mean, as far as population. They have a huge finance test versus like I have more clerk staff than they do finance. So that's, it's just, like I said, it's just gonna depend on the county itself. So we're just gonna try our best to get some more information on how they're structured, and then kind of focus ours in that same direction.
Okay.
Hopefully, by the end of the week, Sarah and I'll have a chance to talk and, um, try to get something. I mean, I'm not gonna tell you we're gonna have anything concrete by Friday, but the plan is to try to get like what, as far as staff, we need, what kind of sal- but the plan is to try to get like what, as far as staff we need, what kind of salaries we need and kind of give you something, so you can have something to go off of.
Maybe we'll have something by the next budget.
Yeah, yes, sir, I plan on, I mean, hopefully, yes, yes, definitely, that's the plan, so.
As soon as you come up with, y'all come up after your meeting, if you can forward?
Yes.
The results of the plan and all to each one of the commissioners, so we can kind of be aware of what's going on.
Do we wanna go over what has already been submitted, Stacy?
You can, I mean, and honestly? There's no drastic change at all except for the increase, you know?
I don't think when you go over it, because I'm looking at, what I'm looking at is the same thing I seen last year. So what I would like to see is?
It is gonna change.
The plan.
Yes, sir. It is gonna change, yes, sir, definitely.
Yeah, we can do that. And as we get a little further into it with, with estimates and things like that, we'll certainly keep you guys informed as we're moving through and get a little more.
And then maybe by the next budget workshop, it's not gonna be a workshop as we have to be.
Yes, sir.
We will know more about what's going on?
Yes, sir, certainly.
And, and the plan. But I would like to, as me, as a commissioner, I would like to be advised of the process. And I think the rest of commissioners would like to see that also. And maybe we have input that might help.
Yes, sir.
And we can do that individually?
Yes, sir.
By submitting to you, to the staff.
Yes, certainly.
Any other questions or comments? There we go. Thank you, Ms. Harvey.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Yes, sir, we need it.
Prayers.
We need to.
I tell your daddy we pray over him. That's a bad situation.
I don't know why we were saved for last, I guess the best for last.
Well, I wasn't gonna say that, but if you wanna.
I'm sure the other constitutionals thank you for that. But just wanna say thank you, Chairman and Board members, for allowing us to come up here today. Just wanna open up with your remarks and then I'm gonna let Sheriff Cruz come up here and present the budget with the BCCMC part and the Sheriff's Office. I wanted to say I thank you all for coming and meeting with us for those two hours each to go over some of the issues that we're facing. And as we discussed in there, our crime rate in Baker County is low for a community our size. We've been doing a good job to keep that under control. But however, since January this year, we have faced some more violent crimes and shootings, robberies, and unfortunately two homicides, homicides that's posed some threats to our public safety. To address those, I've launched some specialized enforcement teams. I have partnership with some of the federal and regional agencies to, and advance some different technologies in the community to help us with that. We're also working to upgrade our dispatch and our record system to support some of these efforts that we are doing. The biggest discussion that we had was with our staffing, our retention and turnover, the workload that they're having to do, our mandatory overtime. We are losing employees to other counties for the salary that they are receiving. So some of those things that we have implemented in our budget this year and our request, I think will take care of some of those issues. And I just know that we have had a good worker relationship and you've supported the Sheriff's Office because y'all have the same goal that we have and that's to keep our community safe. And some of these things have to be implemented in order for us to continue to keep Baker County a safe place for people to raise their families and us to go outside and enjoy what we have here in our, our community. But with that, I'm gonna ask Sheriff Cruz to come up and he'll kind of go over our numbers, unless you have questions for me.
I don't have a question, Sheriff, but I, I wanna, one, express my appreciation for you calling each one of us in to come meet with you. That was very helpful for me, especially in preparation for you doing your, your town hall meeting. But I wanna call, I wanna just also share a thought with you on the town hall meeting. I noticed, and, and I don't, I don't follow social media to the nth degree to worry about what they're saying. It's not my issue. Unfortunately, that same night, as we'd already talked, I had another commitment for the county.
You did.
And so I wasn't there. But I will tell you, even if I not had a commitment for the county, I still would not have been there.
I understand that.
Because in my view, in my opinion, this was your meeting to run. And there's been some, some very negative comments on social media praising you for having, which I agree with. But bashing the Board of County Commissioners for us not being there, making statements that we didn't want to be there because of the other issues on with other constitutionals. And we don't want to be held accountable to the public. And I just wanna say upfront, one, I respect your office and what you're doing. That was your meeting. And this board has a meeting twice a month that we are here to be held accountable to the public. And anybody that wants to hold us accountable, please come. We're here for you to come express the concerns. But I want you to know, I, I did not, I was not there. I had another commitment for the county, but even if I had now, I still didn't think it was appropriate for us to be there to hijack your meeting and that's what was said. So I wanted you to know, while we fully support where you're at, there's also appropriate times for us to be there and there's appropriate times when we should not be there. And to me, that was one of those times that it, that it was best that we not be there so it could stay focused on what your agenda was.
Absolutely.
But I appreciated you having the meeting and very clearly it was articulated that you indicated that you had met with each one of us. And I appreciate that, that you was very transparent with what took place. And I appreciate your effort on that side as well.
And I did address that, because it was brought up. And I did address and I explained to each person that was in the audience that you took your time to come sit down with me for a more detailed meeting for that took about two hours of our time for each one of y'all. And I explained that to the audience that was there, because it was brought up. I can't post their questions, that was a question. I answered it the appropriate way that I thought was necessary for this board, because I've expressed to them, we get support from this board. We have to work together in order to get what we need to make our community safe. And y'all are a hundred percent a part of that and y'all are a hundred percent, I feel, agree with the things that we need to continue to make Baker County safe. But I did address that, that they've got an overview, you got a deep dive. So you are aware, you know what we're after and, and I did try to express that to the best of my ability in that meeting.
Absolutely, and that's, that was my point of this, is one, I appreciate you having the meeting. Two, you did point that out. And three, there's appropriate reasons why we did not be there.
I understand, I understand.
And I just wanted to be on record in the public's, making that statement. And that was the right time, not waiting to the commission meeting tonight. So I appreciate what you did, thank you.
Thank y'all. Any more questions for me? After it's over, I'll be able to answer if you need.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners? I also would like to say thanks for the time that y'all spent, because it's, when you're preparing this, it's me and Brad, you know, it's a lot of hours doing a budget like, like we have to do there. And so we've spent a lot of hours going back to around March is when we really started, because we have to do a real dive into where we're at, where we wanna go. But it is a lot easier when you come and you sit down and you have that time. And I really appreciate it too, because it makes it easier even here, because you have a aforementioned knowledge about what we're trying to accomplish. So I, I, with the Sheriff, appreciate your time that you did to come and sit down with us and go over that like that. So first, what I'll do is on the BCCMC, I'm just gonna, really, the, just to provide numbers as it relates to the status of, you know, the, their accounts, really. So in their reserves, they have three million?
Ninety-two.
It's a USDA required of two million twenty-five. So their available reserve balance is one million sixty-seven. So I think just to point out a couple other numbers, some things that's been asked. I think it got asked maybe in our meeting that we had about the balance of that loan is, is twenty-five point eight million. And their monthly debt payment is principal and interest of one sixty-seven eight ninety-eight for an annual debt payment of about two million fourteen thousand dollars. I will also add their budget, BCCMC's budget, which is part of paying that debt, is two point seven million, two point seven five two for the, that's their annual budget. Their budget consists of paying the debt, insurance for the place and their incidentals and maintenance and stuff like that. So that's what their annual budget is, two point seven five two, two point seven five two.
So it's only seven hundred and forty thousand for, for those items?
It was.
Almost seven hundred and forty thousand for those items? Is that what it was?
You said, you said two point seven five million is their total, but you got two million of debt payment? So that is about seven hundred and forty, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for insurances?
Yes.
Maintenance?
Yes, that includes all, that's their total, yeah, and, and crystal, paying their?
They're paying more in principal to pay it, huh?
They're, they're paying principal and, yeah, interest.
Okay. Gosh, okay, and she's including that, so, okay. Sorry, thank you.
I confused you there.
So, so to be clear, it's about, you got, they got about two point seven five million for their, when you said their portion. That, is that in addition to the county's, what the county pays? That's just for them running the, that's for them running the, the facility?
That's their, their budget, their annual budget, that they, you know, for their expenses. So that would be the debt service and everything.
So that's two point seven five million, take out about two million dollars for?
The, the?
For the bill, the, the interest and debt. And that leads to seven, forty-seven fifty to pay all their insurances, their staff, any maintenance repairs, all those kind of things.
Gotcha.
One thing I'll add to this, and this is really just an FYI, really I made them aware as well. ICE is in a backlog. With everything going on in the country, they've found themselves in a position of trying to keep up. They're like one point four million dollars in arrears to, on payments to BCCMC. That could be an issue quickly if we get into another month. With the reserves sitting the way they are, that could present a problem for them if that continues. So of course, what we do when we have these issues is reach out to ICE over and over again about, hey, what's up with the payment? And basically, we've gotten an email back that they sent nationwide to, not just us, but they sent it to every partner they have. Basically said, you can send all the emails you want. They're not getting responded to. We're behind, it's a nationwide thing, we'll pay you when we can pay you. So that's just an FYI, I don't really, there's not much you can say more about that. But, but that could be an issue for us pretty quickly based on the level of their reserves related to the operation. So it's around, one payment's around, right now, with everything going away, it is a little over seven hundred thousand dollars for, for one month is about what we're averaging. So you're two behind, so. That puts you about one point four, so that's kind of a, little bit of a crisis situation we're dealing with right now. Hopefully, we'll get, catch up payment here before long, so we're just kinda in wait and see pattern now. So as far as the last thing I'll cover on there end is basically, and we did kind of go over this in, in the meeting, so I'll just highlight it again, is the inmate cost. The housing cost for the inmates for the next fiscal year would be four point one six zero five six seven, four million one hundred sixty thousand, five hundred sixty-seven dollars. That would be the requested cost, or actual cost really, for the next year. That's based on a, an average population of about one forty-four. And that's an increase from last year from one thirty. That average does ebb and flow up and down. So, but we're kind of holding to that somewhere in that pattern, so I think it's gonna be somewhere within there. But at the time, we done the budget, that's where we were at. I looked at it a couple of days ago and we were close to that number again. So that, that's kind of what you're looking at with your county inmate cost. And that's the housing cost. But of course, then with the outside inmate cost, which consists of inmates going to hospital, having to go pick up county inmates from other jurisdictions when they get rested on local warrants, some issues we have with, you know, having to put them on suicide watch in jail and having to do overtime man-hours because it's a creative post when you have to do a one-on-one situation. Those costs are averaging right now around a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year. So your total cost based on that outside number would be four point three two four nine six nine, four million three hundred twenty-four nine hundred sixty-nine. So?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question?
Yes.
Randy, we don't have any of this. Can you guys email us this documentation? Because the commissioners aren't seeing this, they're just trying to write notes on what you guys are reading on. And Cheryl and I don't have this either.
Yeah, you can't.
We've got the Sheriff's Office side, but we don't have anything on BCCMC.
Yeah, it, it would be, the, the number would be on your face sheet too, though. The main, the total number, I'll give you the breakdown number. But the, the total number, four three two eight 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 nine is on your, should be on your face sheet for the corrections.
They should, that what you just, four three two eight?
Yep, it's on, it's on the face sheet. Yeah, they, they will do that, because it, things fluctuate a little bit. So when you're talking about that kind of timeframe, but you see it's kind of close to, yeah. Yeah, because what you'll see there is something, because what'll happen is if you go back to the, to the outside stuff, it's done by month. So that average here can drop just a little bit based on what activity happens outside.
You can make, she can stand and make copies and send it to us.
But the number on the face sheet is the total number, but should be on the sheet that they have, yeah.
That's the four three two eight 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 nine?
Four billion three hundred twenty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So it went up four hundred nine thousand eight hundred sixty-eight?
The, well, four, yeah, somebody, but last year's, last year's cost was, if you, for those of you want, if you wanted, last year's was three, three point nine one nine oh two one. And I think too, as, as, in having a discussion with the Commissioners, one of the things that came up was the, you know, because we went from this deal where you were doing a daily bed rate, then flat fee. So if you tried to look at it from a comparison of a daily bed rate based on that population, it, it would be just the, housing would be like seventy-nine, seventy-nine, if you wanted to look at it that way, seventy-nine dollars a day. So when you think about it in comparison, as we had discussed in one of the meetings, I think when you started, when they opened, it was eighty-four seventy-two a day. Then you got a break for anything that was up to a hundred, it was seventy-six twenty-five. And then anything over a hundred, it was eighty-four seventy-two. And that was, that was from the start in two thousand and nine. So that was what your cost was then. So right now, if you wanted to use that as a comparison and you wanted to break that out in your housing cost, you're looking, you would be doing it at seventy-nine, at one forty-four, breaking that down to three sixty-five. Any questions about that number? All right, law enforcement budget. I'm going to, since you had the benefit of getting a deep dive on it, I think, not to bore you with doing every single thing we did, I'll hit the highlights. But if you have any questions, of course, you can stop me. So I'll start with the judicial portion first. And basically here, what we're looking for here is, is one of the major things we're doing this year is our law enforcement side is requesting to increase the starting salary from forty-three four to fifty thousand for, for a starting deputy. That's one of the places that we're, we're struggling in. And if you look at the judicial services part of the budget, you'll see an increase in irregular salaries of twenty thousand dollars, nineteen five seventy-eight. And that's, there's three deputies that would be affected in that division. And that's, there's three, um, deputies that would be affected in that division. If you go to the, uh, annual leave buyback payout, the, the biggest increase there is due to a retirement.
Randy, can you hold one second?
Yeah.
Do we have this, do we have any of this, because all we have is the one cover page there.
I seen everything.
I'm, I'm, I'm not done, I'm just, all I'm saying is I got, we got, only thing I have, unless I'm missing it, and that's why I'm asking, it may be me. All I have is that one page, there's, there's nothing else that I have.
I, uh, I tried to reach our server, they couldn't get the connection, if I could, got connected, I could, I could even, now, but I could, anybody else, if you could.
I just, I, I, again, like I said, I just have this one side, which I can't even get to rotate, but that's my issue, and I, I, I don't have anything.
Your letter, just your face sheet.
You sent the whole packet back.
Yes, sir.
So the whole, the whole packet was originally sent, the certificate wasn't signed, you mentioned to me, and did I just send the certificate?
Yeah, I got it.
Uh, Cheryl got it. I didn't pull my stage left, I'm losing all my papers here. I think it was eight-thirtieth. Are y'all with me now, do y'all, do y'all have it, can y'all follow?
I don't have it as of yet, I...
You guys just wanted an email real quick?
It's time of May, I just...
Well, no, I, I think if they just make copies of these slides, it'd be so much quicker.
At least music playing or something. A little music playing in the background all the way for a second. I'd get to sleep if you did that. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Cheryl.
I'm good, I got it now.
I'm sorry. You should have it, this one says, uh, LEO at the top, and it should say judicial, in the yellow bracket right there. If y'all like this one out better, I can give it to you this way next year, the whole packet. Are y'all, y'all with me?
I'm good, yep.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm working on it, making sure I'm in order here.
Yeah.
It don't take much to confuse an old man.
All right.
So I'm ready.
So again, like I said...
Judicial services, correct?
Yeah, judicial, yeah, 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 so if you, the left column is last year, middle column is this year, and then the difference, so I'm, I'm gonna scroll down to difference and hit the highlights. So, as mentioned, um, our request this year is to move the deputies from forty-three, um, four, on the starting salary to fifty. There's three deputies in this division that that would affect, um, which is driving the, um, irregular salaries increase to nineteen, five, seventy-eight. Your annual leave buyback payout, um, that's, that's mainly due to, uh, retirement, um, of one of the officers there, so that's including this, uh, payout. And then, of course, down at the, uh, other end, at the bottom there, you can see what the FICA, the FRS, and the, uh, health insurance is. Our health insurance in ours is based on fifteen percent. Um, I understand that that may be a little bit different now, but this is based on fifteen percent increase in insurance, and of course, the high-risk, uh, FRS went up three percent, so you'll see a change of about forty, um, thousand dollars, forty-eight, thirty-nine, in judicial services portion.
Just to be clear, next year, this number will drop by ninety-six, seventy-six, because you wouldn't have the buyout.
That's correct.
So if you're looking at a thirty, annual average of around thirty-two thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Instead of a forty thousand.
That's right. Dispatch is next. Again, the issue here is, of course, we're adding, um, two dispatchers, um, that's, you'll see that, um, increase in regular salaries. It'll increase sixty-six, five, oh, five, is, is all due to that. Your next big one, of course, is your, um, taxes at, um, FICA taxes, your FRS contributions, and health. Um, again, it's kind of like, we, we also took the same approach, um, that the tax collector did. We actually sent out employee questionnaires about insurance, so we've seen such a big jump. So, we actually went out and polled the whole agency about what their intentions were with insurance, so we could get a more accurate, um, picture of, of what they were going to do. So, some of these increases are not just based on the fifteen percent, they're also based on who got in, who got out. So, so that's, that's what your number there is on the, on the health insurance there. So, the, the big thing here is to add the two dispatchers, and so that, that's an increase in that area of about one sixteen, one sixty-six. Next is, uh, law enforcement, personnel services. Regular salaries, again, the same thing here, this is your biggest, um, increase related to the, um, starting salary change from forty-three, four to, to fifty.
How many's, how many's impacted here, in the, um, judicial, you had three deputies that was impacted there?
Yeah.
How many's impacted on this side?
How many impacted?
Dispatch.
Zero in dispatch.
Zero in dispatch, but in LEOs?
Thirty, uh, thirty-six.
You got thirty-six officers that would be raised from starting at forty-three to fifty?
Thirty, thirty-six deputies in this, this portion here, yes.
There's thirty-six deputies total, but they're all nut at that bottom salary.
No, it, yeah, that, no, these thirty-six are actually, will be ones that'll get moved up to fifty.
From forty-three to fifty?
No, there may be some that's in the mid-range of that. In other words, you may have somebody that's a forty-eight that gets moved to fifty.
Okay.
Thirty-six affected, but it ain't all of them coming from forty-three, four to fifty. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir, there's thirty-six impacted in this category, but their amount they're going to get increased will range, it will vary, but there's thirty-six that would net an increase. Thank you.
And that would be the same in the other, uh, in the judi, in the judicial as well. As a matter of fact, I don't think any of them will be coming from forty-three to fifty, they will...
But only three of those are impacted in judicial.
That's right, there's three impacted.
So three impacted in judicial, but here we got thirty-six impacted. The amount may vary, but they're all going to be moved to a minimum of fifty.
That's right.
Okay.
Um, so then you, uh, and then you want to look at the, um, additional, um, half of the position for a CPA, which is being split with BCCMC. Um, so, your portion of that would be thirty-two, five in regular salaries. And then, of course, adding a detective is also in that area. So when you're looking at regular salaries increase, you're looking at moving the deputies up, um, to, to fifty. You're looking at half of the salary for CPA, and then adding a detective.
Can you go into detail about the, why we're hiring detectives, just so public, we're in a public meeting?
Yes, um, with all of the, um, shootings that we've had in violent crime, um, there's a couple of things that, that play into that. One of the biggest issues is these crime scenes have, have been really big, but we don't have the, uh, the manpower, because when you have a massive incident like that, you have, the, the scene has to be taken care of, um, with a detective, so you have, of course, the patrol officers can, can, you know, rope the scene off and close it, but the investigator has to work it, so he has to do, you have to have investigators to, to do that, work the crime scene. Then you have to have, um, investigators deal with, uh, multiple witnesses that have to be talked to. If you got somebody injured, shot, or whatever, and they get taken to Jacksonville, so what, detectives has to go over there, deal with that, collect any evidence from over there. Uh, victim and witnesses in the area, somebody has to talk to those, so you have detectives. And what we found ourselves is, is being extended, um, with personnel, investigative personnel, because of how big these crime scenes have been. Not to mention the things that Sheriff had talked about with partnerships with these other agencies, because we have to have, uh, detectives that are going into those areas and being a part of that, uh, collaboration, and they have to kind of do that specifically, you can't have one do it this week, one do it next week. So we're trying to specialize in that stuff, so we can actually, um, really hone in and, and get, um, really good at, at dealing with those types of, whether it's gang activity, tracing weapons, um, dealing with street violent crime and gangs, so, so that's kind of the biggest reason we need to do that.
Thanks, sir, that's for the detective, correct?
I'm sorry.
That was for the detective?
Yes.
Okay. Now go into information on CPA?
We have...
What I'm doing this for is justification, because we get a lot of questions, and I do as the commissioner when we're hiring people. If we're in a public meeting, I can say, I can give them my explanation, but then if I, I can tell them, if you want the real explanation, go to the public meeting web, of the website, and you can hear exactly what is being used for. And I, and other, see, other officers or not, other, Lord, I can't even, the constitutionals, when they, when you go into the, uh, tag agency, and you're waiting thirty minutes to get your tag, you, that, people know why we need people in the, in the tag agency.
That's right.
But on the sheriff's side, it's kind of hard to see, because another thing y'all do is behind the scene. You're not out front, so I'm asking, on behalf of the constituents that's listening, to explain why we need a CPA at the sheriff's office.
Definitely, fair question, I call it the dungeon, because we stay in there so, so deep, um, but absolutely, number one, we have two huge budgets. But I'm gonna, I'll just straight up tell you, um, one of the major reasons that is, is that we've learned, number one, by losing Jeffrey, that one person does make a difference in your operation. And if that one person walks out the door with all the knowledge about a, about certain things, and there's no redundancy built in, you got a boy, you got a hole, and it's, when they leave, it's like, it's like a hurricane coming through there, it's just like, all kind of things have to change. So, we've been blessed and lucky that Jeffrey has been willing to help Brad, um, come in and out in the evenings and, uh, spend time to try to get him caught up. But, you know, God forbid, if Jeffrey was to walk out the door, or anybody in that situation, from a, an agency like ours, where you have two big budgets, um, and you have all of these other things you have to deal with on a day-to-day basis, um, and, and it was just, where you couldn't even grab that knowledge is a problem. So, one of the reasons is to create redundancy. We need somebody that will have more than one person, that will have information and knowledge on how to, how to do this if we have an issue with transition. Then it's workload, right? Workload is key, and which we saw that a little bit with the issue with the audit, because Jeffrey was on his way out, right? Um, we had issue, we didn't, we didn't have a payroll clerk at the time, so we had to make some adjustments there, but the biggest thing that hit us with that was Ms. Becky's husband going out, um, with, with an issue, and she had to take on the payroll job, and so, um, or Jeffrey had to do that, so it kind of put us behind, because he was having to do too much. So there's no way one person can do all of those things and be expected to also be a manager of a division, and then have to actually do all of the, the work himself, and then not have the ability to take off, go somewhere, and there have that, that somebody that can fill in that void while they're gone or on vacation. So, so this is something that really came to light, uh, when Jeffrey left, and it was a whole host of reasons. So, it's definitely something that we have to do, and, and BCCMC's been gracious enough to understand that as well, and has, has agreed to, to do half of that, split that with you, because they'll be also do, taking on duties on that side of the house as well, so. So that is the, I know it's a long one, but that's, those are some very good reasons as to why we need to do that.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, on that? It'll be very interesting to see how things work out with your hiring a CPA, and the clerk indicating they need to hire a CPA too. And because we've heard that it's impossible practically to get one, and so it'll be interesting to see how, how both, how we can find two CPAs here for Baker County, when we're, it's clearly a, apparently a real challenge to be able to do so. So I wish y'all the best of luck if it's, we'll see how, how that moves out.
We are finding that a cha, because we've already been in that process of looking, and you're, you're definitely on Kita, but it's like, like the clerk says, you really want to get somebody that's already ahead of the game in the government accounting, because it is a big difference than the private sector, and that is, that is going to be something that, that we're dealing with, and we're, we've already kind of been combing the weeds on that, so, you're right, we'll see.
There's a lot of governments.
Yeah.
There's a lot of private, there's a lot of governments too, so, and everybody has to have these type of services, so it's, it's, I'm just, all my, all I'm saying is, we've got apparently the same need in the clerk's office, and it's been expressed, that that's a very challenge to find somebody to do it in rural counties, so I, I would be interested in seeing how that service goes for you guys.
We'll keep you posted, thank you.
The problem you want to find is the pay in the private sector is so much better than it is on the public sector.
That's great.
So you have to find somebody who's dedicated to the benefits and the other things, have to sell them other things to get them here, because we can't pay what the private sector pays.
That's right. Yeah, and, and it, we do know it's going to be a challenge, we're going to give it a go. So, uh, when you look at the, uh, the next bigger item is the...
Can I ask one question on that real quick? On the interest in deputies, the total cost of that is a hundred and fourteen thousand, correct? To, to raise them to the fifty thousand?
Yeah.
The cost's a hundred and fourteen, or a hundred thousand, nine, fourteen, half the salary is thirty-two, five hundred?
Yeah, that's related to those, those, yes.
And then the detective's fifty thousand, right?
Say what?
And then the detective was, uh, fifty thousand, that makes up the sixty-nine?
Yep.
That, I'm trying to figure out how that, I'm coming out to one eighty. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it is, but you're, yeah, because what you're, we're probably getting at too, is, is that there's some other funds that pay, so all of those thirty-six deputies, right, may not be coming from you.
Right.
Somebody else would be...
Okay, okay.
Some funds comes from other places.
I just wanted to clarify, and that was some, we, I think we approved a grant the other night that related, was related to this, correct? Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that's where you see some of the, you know, some of the stuff gets backed off on the back end.
This is, this is just the county's portion?
When you see it in the line over here to the, to the right on... When you see it in the line over here to the, to the right on the bracket, that's what, yeah, that's what, that's what we're asking you for.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The annual leave buyback and payout, again, you got here, the biggest reason there's an increase here is the, there's two retirements here payouts. So, the annual leave buyback is about forty-three, so it hadn't really, wouldn't have went up, you know, that much. It's those, it's twenty-three thousand-two-fifty-seven, there you see there for, for two retirements of folks that are leaving. The overtime, go ahead, yes?
As I question, I don't know if this is really a county question or sheriff or constitutional question. Do we have a policy at the county of which the maximum hours that you can carry forward year to year?
Um, yes, sir. So, on, on vacation time, on our end, we do. I'm not sure, the Constitutional officers may not all follow that, but under the county commissioners, you only can carry so many in your annual leave, and at the end of the year, the, yeah, it's two-forty. And at the end of the year, if you have anything above that, it gets rolled over into sick leave. There is no max on sick leave.
And when an employee departs, how do we pay out?
Only upon retirement.
But how do we pay out? One-hundred percent of what?
No, sir, they only get a portion of that.
What do they get paid out?
I don't have a percent, I have to pull my...
Is it a percentage of the annual and a percentage of the SIS?
Yes, sir.
Or what?
Yes, it is, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
It's forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent, SIS, you know, today.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
But you have to be there ten years to get that's it.
Okay, I just, the reason I ask is, when I start seeing us hit and hit with each different department, fifteen, sixty thousand pops a year, the question, I wanted to start revisiting the fact, how much are we moving forward each year and converting over, and there should be a maximum payout as well? Because, well, that's great to have as a big walkout payment, it impacts the county pretty hard.
Yes, sir.
And, and so...
Can we start accruing that yearly?
That was a problem we were having, that's why we did the, every year, we, again, it's different too because we're, we're under mandatory overtime. The shifts they work, they work fifteen days a month because they work twelve-hour shifts. So, a lot of times, their time can accrue, you know, pretty good. So, what we do is, at two-forty is what you can carry over. So, if they've got anything over to two-forty at the end of the year, we'll take it back, buy it back at, at that rate. Because if you let it sit or you try to do it in the comp, or you roll it in as their time or their salary increases and all of those things, then you're paying out at a higher rate. So, we try to clear that.
But Randy, that, that call, at the end of the day, I, I hear what you're saying, but that immediately tells me we're paying a lot more for that because now we're buying it back at a hundred percent. But if it rolled to sick at some point down the road, it's going to be paying out at twenty-five percent, or they would have it available for need if there ever was truly sick.
Okay, but you're right. But our problem is, our problem is they get to December, November, October, gets to the end of the year, ain't nobody working.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but that's, to me, that's a different challenge, different issue with them calling in sick if they're not sick, or everybody wants to take off. So, that's a different, I just, I'm just trying to understand how, how we get where we, we, we have these fifty, sixty-plus-thousand hits in each department, large numbers each time because of leave, and, and is there a way that we can, not going to solve it here right now, just trying to understand how we're, how we're handling it.
On our end, it's only at retirement and for the public works department. They can do an annual buyback, no one else can, but that's a union negotiated thing. On our end, we're only doing those payouts at retirement.
Okay.
Yeah, and so what it does is it cuts down on that for you. On our end, it cuts that down because it's doing it every year versus doing it at the end of the year. But when you talk about the annual leave, like I said, and the way they work, and it's mandatory overtime, if I'm denying their leave, if they put in leave and then we denying it because we don't, we can't, can't take off, we don't have nobody work, we were short, right? And you denying it, then at the end, I tell them, oh, now you've got to roll it over at twenty-five percent, ain't nobody going to work there. Would y'all? If I'm denying you, requesting to try to get it off, and I deny you because you can't work, because we were all, or we're, we're short of people, we got to have the mandatory overtime, and then I tell you in December, well, you didn't take none of your time off, so I'm going to roll it over at twenty-five percent.
Does it help you attain officers?
Ain't nobody going to stay there.
We don't roll over twenty-five percent.
No, it's not, no, no, no. Anything over two-forty, it used to roll over to sick leaves if they didn't use it.
Right.
His point was, is that why do we pay them? Because you're paying a hundred percent instead of them rolling it over at twenty-five percent because they're going to give us twenty-five percent.
When they retire.
But if I'm denying them the leave because they're not going to, nobody's going to do that, they're going to start putting in requests to take off. If I'm in a mandatory overtime situation, and I'm saying you can't take off, I'm not allowing you to take off because you got to work, then it gets to December and it's a rollover, and I've taken their time from them and said, no, you're only going to do twenty-five percent of it.
Is that pretty well industry standard, what y'all do?
Well...
There's several other nuances to this is, one is he's paying out a hundred percent at a lower rate than when they retire. Second of all, if they go into drop, they get a hundred percent at drop that they're elected. So, there's other little divots that...
I think what he's doing is a great idea. I'm just trying to find out if this is an industry standard.
There's a lot of them in our business.
Because I understand where you're coming from, because we had the same problem while I, I worked at a company, and they done the same thing, and then they quit doing it, and they lost fifteen, twenty people just like that.
A lot of fire, a lot of firing police do, do it this way because of those same issues I addressed.
Because we was mandatory overtime too.
That's right.
And when you get mandatory and overtime, you better have a caveat.
And plus, it's another benefit, I mean, because then the employee says, hey, I'm having a son about the year end, so I'll stay and work for my employer.
Stay and work, yeah.
And that's what they're having a hard time with.
I agree with Commissioner Ben. I understand what he's talking.
I'm not happy getting changed, I'm just trying to understand what we're doing and how we do it, so.
I understand what he's saying about the twenty-five percent.
I get it, you got a valid reason, so I'm not saying let's go change it. I'm just trying to understand what we're doing and what the options are because we're getting big hits in every department with these people that's retiring with large balances when they leave, and my thought is, is there a way that we can work through this, not trying to take anything from employees, but rather work through so we don't have these big hits? That's the only purpose of my question.
Yeah, and I think that, that's why I took the time to explain the challenges because that's why we went to it, because of those challenges we have. And then we would get hit, well, you denied my leave.
Right.
You denied me leave, so, so those were...
It's a different story if you're denying leave versus people that just let it build and let it build, not because they got denied leave. If they went all year long and didn't get denied leave and asked for one day off and couldn't take that one day off, but yet they're going to get rolled over forty, fifty hours, they can't lay claim that you denied my fifty hours of leave when they only asked for one day. There's, and again, I'm not saying that's what's happening, I'm just simply saying, trying to understand how we get these hits every year and seeing, just thinking through, is there a way to help reduce that number? That's all, that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Didn't mean to derail the meeting, I'm just trying to...
You didn't, we've been there where you're talking about too because it does, we don't budget it, because if somebody says they got all that time and they leaving, didn't tell us they were leaving, we got hit the same way you're talking about, and it hurts. So, at least we plan this way. We, we got a plan.
That's part of budget workshop, because you didn't derail anything. And these other guys need to hear it anyway, so.
Yeah. No, and I don't mind explaining it. I think it's, I think it's, you need to explain, yeah. Overtime is kind of self-explanatory because we've just been talking about a lot of that. And with the training and all of those things that we did, you know, it's just based on what we're seeing. So, you have five thousand in regular overtime, five thousand in training. Incentive pay is just, that's, those are required payments for classes that they take and stuff like that. So, that's kind of an ebb and flow based on classes that they take or get during the fiscal year. Your FRS contributions, you can see, were those increased fifty-seven, eight, sixty-five, and of course, life and health, one-sixty-two, one-fifty. Now, a lot of that was not just a fifteen percent. It's also some of those changes we talked about related to coverage changes. So, any questions with that? Operational costs, I'm just going to highlight maybe a few of these. We, we went through these in depth, but the main hitters here, of course, the insurance, liability went up thirteen thousand dollars, workers' comp went up twenty-nine thousand You go down to bulletproof vest, we've asked for twenty-three, four-eighty on bulletproof vests. This is a portion not covered by grant. We do have grants for those. This is another ebb and flow because it's based on expiration of current vest. So, when they expire, we do a, we do an inventory at the year to see what we got to do to replace them in the next year. Of course, the training expenses, an additional fifteen thousand-three-hundred-four training, that's going to be tied to some of the dispatcher training that we're having to increase on. Body worn cameras is going to be an upgrade, but not just the camera upgrades, but also the capability upgrades. Several safety issues there that we're, we're implementing on the body cameras. Equipment for, for vehicles, this is going to be, you know, emergency lights, radars, forty-five thousand, that's based on vehicle that needs to be dressed out this coming And then the other biggest one would be the computer software line item, which is, is camera integration, things we had talked about in our meeting with y'all that we had about some of the things we're doing technology-wise with, with camera integration. And then, of course, our, our debt service and principal, not much changed there. One-seventy-seven in principal and twelve-three-zero-four, so that's a minor between those two increase. And that's really just a reflection of our actual lease payments, so that's the actual number there.
Debt service and expense, what do you, what's that for?
It's for vehicles, right?
We're doing...
Okay, vehicles, okay. Got you, got you.
So, when you look at the total number of the law enforcement, the increase is five-oh-two, two-seven-five. But when you look at a lot of those things too, if you, you talked about the insurance and FRS alone is two-hundred-and-seventy-four, five-forty-five. So, you can see that's, a lot of those things are out of our control. So, when you look at it that way, we're looking at somewhere around two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar increase related to those other items we discussed. You might have any questions?
So, we're looking at eight-point-seven-nine percent increase total. This is for total operations, which is the increase for your, on the jail side and on the sheriff's side?
Yeah, yeah.
Does this, which, if they're going to get a fifty-thousand-dollar increase, we're not, we'll be looking at three percent increase on all the deputies?
I don't know.
Just on the ones that is not affected with the fifty thousand? Do you know that number?
I do.
But that would be, actually be an increase figured in?
Yeah, we did.
We would need to know, the board would need to know, if we decide to do a three percent pay increase, we need to know the ones that's not affected.
Yeah, Commissioner Mobley asked us about that, so we did it. So, if three percent, it'd be a seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase. If it's four percent, would be one-oh-one, five-sixty-one. And then a five would be a one-twenty-seven, seven-seven-eight. Now, I will say those numbers I just gave you does include that additional two percent those, on those there.
It does include what?
The, the, because the insurance, we did fifteen percent, and we're hearing it's like maybe seventeen or something like that, so.
Is that just law enforcement?
It, this is, yeah, it would be your law enforcement portion, yes, not, not the corrections portion, just the law enforcement portion.
And we're talking about bringing the deputies up to fifty thousand dollars, this is not including the guards coming up to fifty thousand?
They will be, yes.
And that would be a four-oh-nine-eighty-nine increase, that's including that, the fifty-thousand-dollar of the upgrade of the guard, or the increase to the guards.
Yeah, their, their, their budget is, has got it included fifty-thousand-dollar increase.
Per guard.
Yeah, per one that's, yeah, anybody that's under that number, yes.
So, everybody in the BCCMC that just works over at this facility, if they're under fifty thousand, they would be raised up to fifty thousand?
That's correct.
And, but we don't know how, how many is affected, how many are...
Yeah, I, I think I do have that.
Okay.
Let me see here.
It was thirty-six deputies.
That was thirty-six in LEO, three in judicial.
Right.
Okay. But I don't know how many's in corrections.
They're maybe somewhere right here.
Do you know what that, bringing the fifty thousand, the guards up to fifty thousand dollars, that a number would be? What their actual number is, and then what it would be to bring them up?
Yeah, the, there's thirty-seven that's affected in the corrections, and that changes to regular wages, up to a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, one-thirty-nine-four-four-six.
What was that number, a hundred-and-forty-seven, what'd you say?
They have thirty-seven affected, one-thirty-nine-four-four-six.
So, we had a four-oh-nine-eighty-nine increase in the, the jail budget, and a hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that is to raise, a hundred-and-forty of that is to raise the salaries up to fifty thousand?
Yes.
This is just from my notes, I'm just trying, for clarification.
I'm sure the same thing.
Right. That would be included in that, your, that four-six includes that hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand.
So, if we wasn't looking to raise the salaries, we would be looking at a two-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar increase to BCCMC?
Yes.
Correct.
Which is for the additional fourteen inmates per year, average per year?
Per day.
Yeah, per day. And other things.
We're tracking the same thing.
Right. Well, at least, that's not good.
It's real good.
At least we're, we're wrong, we're both, we're both wrong together. Any other questions or comments for the sheriff or his staff? Sheriff, y'all don't have no, no gold bars buried out there anywhere around?
On the corrections side, let me get this straight in my mind. Is this the total, the one-forty to increase? Is that, all of that coming from the county? Is there any coming from, are they paying any of the salary increases, or is it requesting the total amount?
You say they, or you say BCCMC?
BCC, yeah. They are not paying?
Yeah, they're paying.
Okay.
Yeah, of course, they're paying from the revenue from, from marshals and I C.
Right, right, okay. I just wanted to get that straight in my mind.
The way, if you're talking about personnel services, it just, it's broken into thirds, so, third, a third, a third. It's simpler to, because you got, you're looking at the three entities, the county marshals and I C, it'd be thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three.
Any other questions or comments?
No, mine is, every, so far, every budget we've had presented to us has been more and more and more, so, we're going to have to figure out, how do we fund the more?
You ain't surprised, are you?
No, sir, it's a normal process, but I'm just saying, I don't know that we're going to be able to fund all the mores that we've, but we'll, we'll work towards getting something we can both live with.
Y'all good, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Again, thank y'all for coming out early today.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank y'all again.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. All right, is that all the Constitutional? Mind taking a short break, I want to go make a coffee.
Just take a ten-minute break, and then we'll start with the animal control, Mr. Knopf.
...
All right, we're back into our budget workshop. And first item we have just be on the county side and will be Ms. Georgia Munford with Animal Control.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning, how are you?
How are you? As I was stating to Commissioner Anderson, after listening to those numbers for the last hour and a half, I don't feel guilty about anything. I'm asking for it, so. If you can review my 3% proposed budget, you can see that most of the cost is involved in personnel, training, and clothing. And we do have an increased request of 15,000 to address a 21-year-old building that desperately needs a makeover. Most of everything else was just a little bit here and there. We did request a $1,000 increase in our spade and your baker program.
Let's back up just a little bit. Let's start on salaries and then operating and capital spreadsheets. If you guys are okay with that, so we can kind of be consistent with what we're talking about. So salaries, I'll summarize real quick. The 3% is there. We did, um... This does not have all of our employees on the chair. We've got director, two officers, and a adoption coordinator. So we'll revise that, but basically, like Georgia said, we've got the 3% there. We do have Georgia still on staff. We have two officers. Those are already, those are budgeted items. The one that's not on this that should be is our adoption coordinator. That is a position that we have right now.
It was grant funded.
It was grant funded. That grant has expired. So if that is a position that we'd like to continue, it would have to be county funded at this point and then into the new budget year. Our grants coordinator, Tanya, has done an exceptional job over the last, a little over a year actually, on increasing those live release rate numbers, which is what we want to see, and getting those animals transferred to rescues and adopted out because overall that reduces our costs on taking care of those animals. So that is one that we are requesting that the board consider funding. Again, that would be technically a new position in this budget year because it's not been funded by the county before. We certainly understand that there's a lot to consider through this budget process. If it's not one that we can keep in the budget, we understand that. But we believe it's been a successful position throughout the, you know, throughout the last year. We would like to see it continue on.
Do you have numbers for that?
It would be the same salary.
No, numbers on this life save rate?
Oh, yes, sir, we do. Not as a part of this attachment, but yes, sir. There's monthly reports that we have to show, but we have shown an increase. If you'll give me one second, I can pull that up.
Well, it's the same as I done with the sheriff and the other staff. Is if you're requesting another staff member, here we have a record of why we're requesting a staff member. I want to see why we need it and if it's, or we already have them as a tip, it's grant funded and we already have the information on what this employee is doing.
Yes, sir.
Then I think that we, that should be a public notice and said in a public meeting, this is why we're requesting this employee. In this case, we have an employee already in that position as a grant. But I haven't seen the numbers of what we're doing. And I think that the board would like to see, and the county would like to see, why we are deciding on keeping this employee.
Sir, if you can find that, I can probably print it up.
I do. I have an email. Just trying to get it pulled up with the right one. We can circle back to it, Commissioner, and I can keep looking for it just so that we don't hold up. But we did see a pretty significant increase in our live release numbers. I'll pull that up while we're talking, but again, we need to revise this spreadsheet because it's not on.
So to be clear, Sarah, if you jump to summary page one, what is now currently showing a $7,714 decrease in the request of budget.
Yes, sir.
Go to the bottom tabs, the very bottom tab, summary page one. That is not correct because if you're going to add another position in there that's not funded now, whatever cost of that position and all the benefits, insurance, all those things that's associated with it goes onto this. So now we're going to see a change from a decrease of $7,000 to
An increase.
An increase of that new position.
Yes, sir. Cheryl, that should be everything that was in that separate budget last year for the grant. It's actually max on the agenda. We don't need to have that on our schedule. But that would just need to be moved into this budget for consideration. Yes, sir, you were absolutely right.
And are we fully staffed out there now?
There's three of us.
Yes, sir. Well, we are not. And then also.
We are not. There's three of us.
Well, I mean, there's three of us.
We're not. There's four positions. Our adoption coordinator is doing both positions right now, but she's actually been moved into an ACO position. She is an animal control officer now. But she's still serving the function as the adoption coordinator since it's been very recent. She's just been transferred into an ACO because she wanted to move into a permanent position. She was worried that if the grant was not, or if the position was not funded by the county, she would be in a position that was eliminated. So while we had an opening, she did decide to interview and qualify to be an animal control officer. So right now she's still serving as our adoption coordinator while she's learning how to be an ACO. But technically that position is open and not being filled.
Well, that was leading into my next question. This is something y'all would have to answer. It's not a dual role. They could do both. This is y'all's.
Ideally, no, sir, because that ACO position requires so much field work and the adoption coordinator also requires her to be out at adoption events. And so it would be very, it would be limited on how much she could do in the office. She could continue to do that, but if not, it would put the burden to make those calls on the other two officers that are there. So it's not out of the realm of possibility. It would just create some conflicts.
I did it for a long time. I did both for a long time.
Yeah, George has done it for a long time. It's not impossible. It would be more efficient to have it as a separate position, but certainly.
And we don't have any idea what that salary is now?
Yes, sir, we do. Yeah, Cheryl's.
Oh, you already got it? So the increase would be 64 now?
Yes, sir, because that is, that is current right now. That's everything that it took to pay her, like I said.
How much?
64. That don't sound.
No, that was the whole, that was, it had the vet bills in there and stuff too that we could do. Cheryl, we only need the salary part. So that's 38,000.
38,894. So instead of a decrease. What is the proposed rate increase? No, no, no. There's a column right there for proposed increase of 3%. So that wouldn't apply to her this time around. We're just hiring him. She, there's not a 3% increase on it this year.
She's in the ACO position now, so technically the animal adoption coordinator is vacant. It was considered a vacant.
She's either going to get the.
It would start at wherever she is at current year. So yes, a new year, we wouldn't need the raise.
And then when we started the thing, I think it was 14,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Did she get a pay raise when she moved from animal coordinator to, did she get a pay raise when she moved from coordinator to an animal control officer?
She did, yes.
So she moved into a whole new position. So any 3% would be based on her current position as animal control officer. If we hire another one as animal coordinator or whatever, adoption coordinator, that would come in at the base salary, not a 3%. So it would be a 29,994 increase, not, don't add the 800, correct. There you go, Cheryl. Don't add the percent increase. Okay.
That is correct. So that amount would need to be added to the animal control for consideration.
So the 29,994 now is added to the initial. So instead of having a decrease of 7,700, we're actually going up by 23,000.
Yes.
And I have one question and this goes along with Commissioner Bennett. Put that rate back up there. It was 14, what?
42.
42.
We have to go to $15.
Yes, sir.
Soon. Why would we be at 14, 42? We need to be at 15 on the animal.
Is that a position required by, that's, that's.
The new rate up at the top is.
Yeah, this year is $14, is it, is, at September 30, minimum wage will be at $14. So that still would be above minimum wage.
And then in 20.
25, it'd be 15. We've got one more increase, 26.
I think at 2026, it goes to 15.
2026, 15. That's the max for the rate per noun.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, I know that's a lot taken, but like I said again, just for consideration.
I just wanted to make sure that we don't.
I know, right, yeah. If you'll go down a little bit and then also, so Georgia was set to retire. We talked about this.
That was my next question.
At our last budget work, our budget hearings last year. We did have to extend that out because honestly, we are running into an issue with certification. So the state of Florida has limited when we can get people certified to be ACO officers. And so we are, we've got HR working to try to get those things coordinated. But if Georgia retires, when she wanted to retire in October, we actually would not have a certified officer.
Actually, it was December.
Yeah, so I believe this moves you into December, Georgia, is what this does. And so this is a partial overlap. We did not, it is in current budget year. We anticipated that to happen now, but because that retirement had to be pushed out a little bit, we have not used that salary in current year, but we do need to re-budget for it next year to do what we intended to this year.
I check it every day. I was contacted by Florida Animal Protection Agency. They were offering euthanasia class, but the requirement was that you had to have a veterinarian on staff. So therefore, we did not qualify, so I can't even send my two new employees to that one.
Even though you have a vet on the data?
It has to be, most agencies, like your big agencies and stuff, all have veterinarians on staff.
So we're working through it. For some reason, those classes are not offered as quickly as they used to be. We could pretty much get someone trained as an officer within 90 days or so, within the last few years.
Last officer training was offered in May. Probably aren't looking for another officer training to happen until October.
So let's slow down for one second.
Okay.
Georgia's wanting to retire.
Yes.
She's got certain credentials that somebody must have in order to be the director.
No, to be an animal control officer.
Okay, and do we have other animal control officers?
We have two people in the positions, but they are not certified yet because we have not been able to get them into a training class.
So we have one certified animal control officer, which is Georgia.
Yes, and we cannot function without a certified officer.
And so, and there's only, only a class that's available, period, to get certified?
Yes, we're trying to see if the Animal Control Association will actually do one off-cycle specific for us. We've had them in the past where they've been able to come out and do some onsite training.
So hang on. So who dictates that thou shalt be an animal control officer? Is that a state requirement?
That's a state statute.
Does the state offer any of the training?
No, sir. They're through private organs.
So the state's dictating thou shall have it, but doesn't make anything available in order to be able to meet it? You have to depend on private, some private entities that they're on schedule to do it. But yet we're told thou shall have it and there's nobody to train.
Yes, sir.
And has it got to be trained in Florida? Is it trained anywhere else?
No, it has to be for a certified, yes, sir. So we have the staff. They just haven't gotten the training.
I understand that we have, we don't have the training.
Correct.
I'm trying to understand what can be done to get the training because what I'm seeing now is this proposed to have two directors for a short, why?
Well, Georgia has to retire, but she's had, so.
Is it, is it an overlap so that a new person's there?
Correct.
But if we don't, the new director's got to be ACO.
Correct.
But we don't know if we're going to have an ACO certified officer.
Well, what we're, this budget that you guys, let's back up a little bit. This budget that you guys are looking at basically is this year's same scenario. It just had to be pushed out to this upcoming year because we could not do trainings. Georgia was anticipating retiring and we actually have an overlap in this current budget of three months to hire her replacement. We are not able to do that. She's got to push it.
In the current year budget, not this proposed budget, in the current year.
Yes, sir. So we're not using money in current year to hire a director. We've had to delay that slightly because of this certification problem. So Georgia has agreed to extend her retirement into the upcoming budget year, which now that overlap needs to be moved forward into the upcoming.
I understand all that. Okay, but my question comes back. We've known this for some time. Did we just, there just a training in May?
We didn't have any officers on staff in May.
We didn't get anybody hired until July.
These, both of those officers, number two and number three position, those are brand new people that have just started.
They just started in July, yeah.
We had one, but.
We had one. We had one. We had a staffing change.
For the staffing.
We had someone leave. And so the people that were then hired have been hired after the training.
And there's nobody out in the industry?
We are searching. I said, Robin's assistant Brett has been actively working on this. He's been beating the pavement trying to find someone.
I've even made personal phone calls to people that I know over Jacksonville Animal Care and Protective Services because a lot of times they will give classes there. I can't find nothing.
Okay, thank you.
On this, if this rocks on any longer, the increase in a director would be contingent on Georgia actually being able to retire. So the only increase over current, so this is the same scenario we had in current budget year, would be, the only increase technically would be adding that adoption coordinator as a county physician. So this is the same scenario we're working on now. We just had to move it into a new budget year because of the delay in her retirement.
Do we have, are we advertising for a new director?
We are, yes, sir. We do have a good pool of applicants already.
Are they certified?
Are they certified?
No, I don't believe any of them are.
Then how are, then we don't have a good pool. If it's a requirement and they're not meeting it, then we don't have a pool.
We would not be able to pay that director an affordable salary to come on as an already trained, certified. This is something we, we have always had to train and certify everyone. We've historically never, we've never hired someone that had the certifications because our salary would not support it.
Is it the current plan to promote from within for this position and train them?
For the director?
Yeah.
No, sir.
But it is our plan to hire somebody that doesn't have the credentials and then train them for them credentials.
Yes, sir.
And we could hire somebody, spend the time training them, then they leave.
Yes, sir. That's a real rule. We have that with every position, unfortunately.
I, we need to think about if we're going to pay those credentials and the classes and things when they come onboard. They need to be in a position to understand they're going to work for a certain period of time or else they reimburse the payment.
And we do that with others. That's not an issue to have that contract in place, an education contract. But like I said, this, unfortunately, you know, Georgia, she's agreed to stay on, obviously, and we appreciate her being able to do that because this is the situation. But like I said, this is basically carrying over what we anticipated was planned in current budget year. It's got to be extended into the new budget year because of that. And again, thank you, Cheryl, for adding that. It will be adoption coordinator on line five. But now that has been accurately updated to reflect the true.
So the increase is 22, 280.
If you'll go back to the summary page, Cheryl.
There was operations. You'll see that line. That went up because I didn't put professional services on the line item.
So the true was 60,000 after we fixed that?
So we go back to the, so if you go back to the first page. So now we've got a net increase of 63,000.
Yes, sir.
Quite a bit different than the deduction of 7,000.
Yes, and you said, Cheryl, that the operating was not carrying over on that professional services. Okay, so Commissioner, that's not just salary, but that was also professional services.
Again, but the increase in that department is 63, only 64,000.
Yes, sir.
So where'd the 41,000 come from?
On which one? I'm sorry, which, on operating?
You had a negative seven.
Yeah, because the professional services.
She didn't have professional services.
Is that, that's the 41?
If there's no other questions on salary, let's go to operating. We can talk about that. If there's no other questions on salary, let's go to operating. We can talk about that.
All of the stay the same except for the vehicle has increased a little bit. And like she said, training, because she's adding three people to train. And then spay and neuter went up a little bit.
That's what you're saying now.
But the total increase there is forty-three hundred. Total amount is forty-seven thousand, but the increase is forty-four thousand three hundred eighty.
Right, that's just more realistic.
Okay.
So the increase is forty-seven, three fifty and not sixty?
No, sir.
Y'all get me all confused.
Let's back up. This particular page, her original number wasn't even adding the forty-seven. It should have been in there from the onset. We should have never had a negative seven deduction. It should have been negative seven plus the forty-seven. It should have been a forty thousand dollar increase from the onset.
Now I'm killing it.
And, and so that was not even in there. Now, the forty thousand increase that it should have been, plus the twenty-nine thousand or whatever. That's, that's starting, now it's starting to get back to where the sheet's correct.
Any questions on operating? I think we kind of hit that, but you, you can see the increases are in relation to basically training three new staff in the current year. And we did, we did ask for a slight increase in our spay and neuter program. That's been pretty successful. We've actually used all of those funds. And then there's two private grants that are being managed with volunteers in Baker County. And they meet here to do the spay and neuter transfers. And there is, there's a waitlist of people attempting to get on to those programs to get animals spayed and neutered. So we did ask for a one thousand dollar increase to just to continue to support that effort because the more we spay and neuter, the less they end up in our little dog jail.
No, the agency's seen a drop in puppies and kittens. It's, it's been successful. It's making a dent finally. After how many ti, how many years we done this spay and neuter?
This is year three for us. They, they've done it as volunteers a little longer than that. But if there's no specific questions about capital, that, that, I mean, excuse me, operating.
The capital outlay, what's improvement are we looking at?
The place needs painted desperately, inside and out.
Georgia has been in the building how many years?
Twenty-one, this month.
It has never been painted in twenty-one years. There is really not much paint left on most of it. It's been pressure washed so many times.
I pressure washed a lot. Washed the paint right off of it.
So we're asking for a fifteen thousand dollar increase to be able to paint the building inside and out. And then also, we do need some new signage there on that too. It's a little, actually, there is no signage out front anymore. I think that sign has been taken down. Or is your sign still out there?
Yeah, the sign's still at the, at one twenty-one and it's still at the collection site. And we do have a sign up on the building as well.
So just some updated signage in building, building general maintenance. But again, we laughed about it, about her building having no paint on it for twenty years.
Them dogs is colorblind. They don't see no different.
All that bleach that gets put in that building all the time, there's no paint left. So that, that is the highlights of that.
The paint, is that gone from like year down? Especially in the kennels because we pressure washed and it just, after all the years, it just blasts the paint.
I have news, I'm not disputing what it needs. I just would like to know what we're doing. So painting, I understand.
Painting inside and out.
I want to know, we're doing an addition or we do it changing, just manicure?
Just a little, little makeover is all I'm asking for.
Because I know we put a roof.
New hairdo.
Any other questions about that?
We know if we put this position in there, the lady that's doing the dog catching is going to go back to this position. So we'll be two positions short then.
She, we have had conversations with her about whether or not she'd like to remain an ACO or if she'd like to go back and do the adoption coordinator position. I think she desires to go back as an adoption coordinator, but again, she, she likes what she's doing now. And then like I said, she, we want to, we want, we don't want to do any changes with her until we know if it's being.
Let me tell you what I, why I'm asking that question. Usually there's always a reason, round to my reason.
Yes, sir.
Because if she goes back to that position, that means we have a trained staff member in one position that we run short today.
Yes, sir.
They can move out of that position for today and then go, because to me, catching a dog when it's vicious or needs to be took call, we need to take care of that.
You're absolutely right. Someone's on vacation or something else, she could always back.
And I would recommend, and if she doesn't go back, if we approve the position, that they're cross-trained.
Yes, sir.
So whoever, and they get certified. I think everyone out there, no matter what position they hold, will be certified.
Yes, sir.
That way that they can do cross.
Yes, I like that idea.
If she moves back, would her salary go down?
The salary is pretty comparable, but if she was going to be a trained ACO officer as backup, we would probably need to consider keeping her salary what it is.
I'm afraid I'm going to disagree with that. If she wants the job as an ACO, she gets the salary for an ACO. If she wants the job as a grant coordinator, she gets the, she gets the job as a grant coordinator. Add the requirement to as the certain, being certified as an ACO as a backup that's in place. This, we can't ever take away. She made a choice and got the pay raise to go up. If she makes a choice to go back, she takes the choice and there's financial consequences to it. I don't agree with keeping the salary high just because she's there. I think.
It's only about a fifty cent increase.
Yeah, it's only like fifty, six cents or something like that.
We can't go back. If she made a choice to go back, that was her choice. If I purposely choose to change jobs and take a decrease in pay, that's on me. Wherever I go to work for a decrease in pay, don't have to pay me what I made before because I chose to go do it.
Yes, sir. My comments were just specific if she was a trained officer and we wanted to use her as a backup because she held that certification.
Well, if she's doing the backup, I had her probably paying her, but I agree with, there should be a step program. And if you start bringing everybody up to the same pay even they're doing different duties, then we're not building in a step program that we need in the county. The county does not have, you either pay this or you pay that. We need some where people want to grow. And it ain't but fifty cent, and I'd like to see that little different number than being a, because I think somebody in the field is in a lot dangerous situation than the person sitting at the desk gets, getting rid of dogs and cats.
Yes, sir.
That position's raised into fifteen dollars next year anyway, so I think.
Where the other ones would go up?
Right, the other ones would go up, but she'll stay where she's at right now currently next year.
Person that starts in Jacksonville as an animal control officer starts at, and it's like twenty-three dollars an hour, and that's untrained.
But you, Jacksonville's budget is three times more our budget is.
I understand.
And if you want to make twenty-three dollars, you'll have to go to Jacksonville.
That same comparison is made with the road department is made, with the sheriff's department is made, with the fire rescue department is made, with everything else. There's a big difference. We're in Baker County.
We're small.
Not Duval County, and trying to compare the two, I think, is not appropriate even do because we're two different entities. Places in other parts of the country for the same job I make make triple what I make. Doesn't matter. I'm not in other parts of the country.
You're not over there.
Same thing here. So I, those references are how everybody else is making somewhere else. One, they're here in Baker County, not Duval County. It's, it's not a comparison.
Any other questions, comments?
I'll follow up with you on those stats on the live release rates. I said I didn't really have a chance to look forward to.
It's just for my information and if you want to share it to the other one, I would like to see. If I'm going to approve a salary and we have stats, I'd like to see what those stats are.
Historical stats, what it was and where it is now to be able to show that there's actually a difference.
If we're saving that many, then I can justify saying, okay, this is how many dogs we've gone, yes, killed.
Yes, we certainly do. We track it monthly.
But if we're not doing anything with that position, we haven't saved any dogs or cats, it's hard for me to justify putting on.
Commissioner, the next question is, how much dollar do you put on the value of life of a dog versus a pet?
Just kidding with you. I'm just saying, if we're saving them, if we're not truly saving them, if we have stats, I don't want to see it.
Well, Tanya just last year, what, last week, was it last week, Sarah?
Uh, yes.
A week and a half ago?
Yeah.
Even though she had moved up, she still participated in the National Adoption Week and drove to Jacksonville every day and set a pet smart and tried to get rid of it.
That's good. I'm not knocking the position. I just think we need to justify the position. And far as the value of a pet, I got three, which one's my wife, two is mine. They don't have a value to me. They're invaluable. So I don't put value on that. I, I put value on what this county has to pay out.
So all in all, we're at a sixty-three thousand dollar increase for animal control. At the end of the day.
Because I wouldn't have y'all so, no. Anything else from Ms. Georgia? We have an animal control grant. What is this?
That was from last year. I'm sorry, that's an error. We should have deleted that off our schedule.
I thought that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure.
I even asked that. What's that?
I didn't want to overlook it.
That was what funded it. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. That was an oversight. We should have deleted that call.
Anything else from Ms. Georgia? Ms. Georgia, we appreciate you being faithful to Baker County and staying and helping us through this process until we can get, get you replaced. Because I know you're ready to retire. You've earned it.
Ah, man, I don't want to be chasing dogs when I'm seventy.
I don't blame you. Thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Georgia.
Item number nine, veteran services. Ms. Tony? How are you doing today, Mr. Tony?
Sorry, I was repeating. Tony has no changes in his budget other than our, our required FRS and insurance increases. Had a couple of reductions on a couple of things, but no increases on the, yeah. Oh, office supplies, yeah, right. Insurance, sorry, operating, yeah. You'll see that there, we actually reduced our vehicle maintenance down. Tony's got his new van. And so really, other than oil changes and tire locations, we don't have any, anything to worry about with that one. Office supplies, we, we're going to true up a little bit on, and go up to two hundred and fifty dollars because we went a little bit over our two hundred dollar budget this year. And then some training, Tony actually has two conferences this year that are largest required training. So we increased that last line by nine hundred dollars. Other than that, there are no changes to Mr. Estrilin's budget.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Tony?
We're not going to cut anything from yours. I said, we're not going to cut anything from yours. Thank you for keeping.
Your budget is safe. He's, you don't have to make any. Thank you, Mr. Tony.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, Tony.
Man of many words.
Everybody needs, everybody needs to learn to do, everybody needs to do presentations like Tony does.
That was perfect.
Wait until Robin gets up here. You guys are going to be.
Let's see where we at. What was the amount change on that? Nothing for spica or anything or insurance?
Two thousand dollars.
I didn't, I missed it and I was trying to write it down. Just two thousand total?
I'll give it to you in a second. Twenty-one oh two.
I have a dual purpose here, so I'm trying to ride and talk at the same time. Thank you very much. Sorry. Okay, Ms. Robin?
My increase comes from y'all proving my position lower into full-time and again, thank y'all for, for that. It's been a good job for me. So other than that, it's just a regular increase for the three percent pay raise and our insurance going up. Got a few little things to ask for. I want to set up a little desk and laptop in the assistant's office just to assist with employees coming in and out to do their insurance or want to look at their pay stub or anything like that. Change anything, pull their EOBs for four to blue, something like that. So very minimal.
Cheryl, can you show us her changes total?
Yeah, you want the summary page, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Forty-one thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars.
Forty-one nine what?
Forty-one five nine six.
And again, just to, like Robin summarized.
And that's your first payroll?
We went part-time to full-time and in current budget cycle. And so the, the true reflection is shown now in this budget because obviously that wasn't on the spreadsheet before.
Yeah, the increase because of personnel is forty-one one ninety-six. So there's a four hundred dollar increase somewhere. I ain't got to it yet.
Four hundred being a top, laptop and stuff.
Gotcha, there it is. Turn it off, it's two hundred equipment. You must be buying a chair. It's about two hundred dollars.
You can't use one of these chairs now.
If I need to, I will.
Anything else from Ms. Robin? Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, appreciate it.
This is a big budget item here now. Ms. April. How are you today?
Good, how are y'all doing?
Doing very well. Which one we doing first? State aid first, number two y'all first.
Is that the one that we had to up office supplies? Mine's mostly people and what helps people live, so and then office supplies.
Well, let's not mistake Ms. April, your total budget increase is five hundred forty-six. If I had to guess, that is simply the increases for requirements, FRS, and the three percent raise is only five hundred forty-six dollars?
And we had, we did have to up our office supplies just because paper went up, it's inflation. So we, we just tried to get to where we covered what we spent.
Two hundred dollars of that increase is specific office supplies.
And two hundreds, or three hundreds is just FRS and insurance?
Yes.
And the three percent raise?
It's the one person that was getting insurance and now it's a negative.
So insurances went negative.
That's right.
And that's why the net, even with a.
And we have confirmed with staff that there will be no insurance changes to what before. This is accurate.
So because there's a decrease in insurance, it offset the three percent increase?
Yes, sir.
So in net, we five hundred, okay.
Three hundred forty-six on library state.
Five forty-six total.
That's three forty-six for the office supply.
I don't know if we can take, absorb that. Ms. Cheryl, for me, helpful. If we could see this page first to see what the percentage and the total raise is, and then do it back and do the breakdown. Because that way I have that number in my head when we're going through the process. Instead of looking at everything and then seeing that spreadsheet, it would help me better. Because I'm trying to run the meeting, write things down and understand where you're, but if I had the total, then when she's talking, it, it helps me a lot. Would that help the rest of y'all? So if we could see the spreadsheet first and then let's do the breakdown, how, how we got to that number. Thank you very much. Okay, anything on library aid, state aid?
Did want to let y'all know that our cooperative director, Trisha Wiley, is leaving us.
No. We finally get somebody we really can enjoy and work with.
But we're going to miss her.
Oh, yeah.
But she, we're very happy for her for what, where she's going and her life in the future. But we will be advertising for a new cooperative director soon.
And how long does it take to fulfill that position?
Well, we're, we are going to be very picky because we had a good person and we want to.
Well, she won't be replaced easily.
No, she won't. But in the meantime, the directors of the libraries will be the interim director, like we did the last time.
Right.
We got it.
That'll alternate between the three of y'all, correct?
Pretty much. We all kind of divvy up what we have to do and then we coordinate. We're, we're going to work it out.
And the interim, the, the union and Bradford and Baker are all going to work together. We've got a meeting next week with New River, so we'll provide an update after that meeting too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go into the library, Ms. April.
Eight thousand nine hundred sixteen increase. Five point two six percent.
Eight thousand nine hundred sixteen. Okay.
Personnel is for the three percent. Here's the summary, with the retirement.
Basically, all payroll. Increase.
And office supplies, she said.
Right.
Yeah, all of that.
That was happening this year.
Not this year.
How is the library? Don't ask, I'm not asking them, we'll talk about it some other time.
We're still waiting on hearing back about money from the grant.
We haven't heard anything on the grant?
No, sir, it has been an architectural review for the remaining work that needs to be done. We provide, ask for status updates, but it's on the state to be able to give us to go ahead, they're not waiting on us for anything, it's just in the review process now.
Yeah, we've done our part.
Yes, sir.
Sounds good. Any questions for Ms. April? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. April.
Y'all have a better day.
A better.
A better day, I like that.
Quick question, I'm sorry. The personnel services, is that just the three percent, what is that, what's included in that? Because it's a nine thousand six hundred... Something, something isn't...
It's your retirement.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not challenging, I'm just asking what it was, I'm missing.
Yeah, most of us retired. And then insurance?
I got you, I see it, three percent is just employee raises, three percent, the other five thousand is under retirement, okay, I understand, thank you, sorry I missed that.
Okay, item number thirteen, we're in Recreation.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll take care of this until Shannon can get here, he's actually got a little bit of emergency at the courthouse, and he's...
Conventional, yeah, I know him very well, he probably called them and paying them to have the emergency.
He said, by text message, that we kind of liked it.
Shannon don't want to be standing up.
We kind of liked that was smoking over there, the phone's all weird.
This is not, he does not like being up here.
Okay, Shannon normally stands at the podium and Cheryl and I talk, so I don't know why, yeah.
That is true.
He took it after Mr. Tony.
I'm saying, I'd be the same way.
They know we're going to fill in for them, so if you guys will, we'll...
We all have our specialties, and this is some people's specialty.
Is that a negative?
Decrease on this one? Yeah, we had a big, we had some vehicles and things like that in previous year, and we don't have any of that this year, so, we got an overall decrease.
Twenty-two.
Ms. April said, I hope it gets better, it's getting better.
It's getting better.
It's getting...
Decrease twenty-two.
Twenty-two sixty-seven.
I got it right here in front of me, and I'm over here squinting trying to see that over there.
So, but, but just, I mean, also, let's be realistic as well, we went from ninety-five thousand last year, and capital and things, to down to sixty, so we still up there pretty high with capital, so the question becomes, what are we doing, there were sixty thousand here for...
Well, we're going to go to that, I just thought that's normal again.
Sixty playground, twenty of that, but I mean, it's come down, that's great, but it was up pretty good from before.
Shannon, we're already starting, if you want, just hang out, yeah. No, no, we're not, but you know Cheryl, I've got it for you, but you'd be here for moral support.
No, you just come on up here to the podium, we might have a question for you.
On salary, Mr. Chairman, is that where you want to go next?
Yes.
Okay, so there's no changes to that one over the three percent raise that we're considering?
Which is right there, three percent. Retirement, six percent increase.
We want to go to operating?
And then his health insurance went up, plus we have added on. So that went up. Operating?
Yep. So on the communications, we had tried some really inexpensive little flip phones for our guys, and they just have not worked this last year, it's been nothing but a problem. So that increase in communication is not increasing any lines that we have, we need to buy some better quality phones than what we've had for those guys. So that's why you'll see that increase there, so we tried to go a very economical route, and it's just not, not been very efficient for that.
Why don't you get something like, again, question, those rapid radios, they are, they go everywhere, and it's like the old...
Do you need nextels?
Nextel beep beeps, it goes anywhere.
We actually said that same thing, Commissioner, so they're not...
We bought some for, for my team to use, we sent, we changed to a different one, only because we had standard across the terminal, but for a short period of time, when we were having issues getting repeater set up, we bought some of those, and they worked, they worked great, and you can be, it's like the nextels, it doesn't matter, you can have one across the country, and it's beep beep, and they immediately got them, so...
We have talked about that, we'd like to look at some of those.
It's a lot different than cellular and things like that, and so you may want to take a look at those as an option.
Yes, sir.
Now, I did see a commercial where they reached California to East Coast.
Now that we're talking about it, just look at your phone and say, rapid radios, and the next time you look at social media, it will pop up for you, and you'll see it.
You're moving to California first?
The only other increase on operating, Commissioners, is increased line item to our vehicles repairs and maintenance. Shannon's truck is honestly not that old, it's a 2019, but it's honestly, it's given us a lot of trouble, it is in the shop more than it's not, and so we, we know that we can get a little bit more use out of it, but we, it's going to cost a little more repairs this year, so right now, we're asking for a two thousand dollar increase, but we'd like to see that vehicle replaced, but again, we're going to try to push that out a little bit longer. It's just been, honestly, it's kind of been a limit, it's just been in the shop consistently since we bought it.
Again now.
Yeah, yeah.
Stair, stair sticks with you, and ain't good.
Yeah, it's just been, it's been a problem, so like I said, we...
Chevrolet?
Chevrolet, 2019 Chevrolet, yeah.
Mine did too.
Yeah, so we're going to try to get another year out of this one, but honestly, it's one that probably, next budget cycle, we really probably need to look at replacing, if it continues to be a burden the way that it has been in the last few years. So on operating, you'll see, it's only a twenty-nine hundred dollar increase, and that is, that is all that's there on... Any questions on that, we'll go to capital?
No.
And on this one, we just, we've got a lawnmower that needs to be replaced, it's on our regular rotation of replacement of equipment on that one, and then actually, for the last several years, we have budgeted forty thousand dollars for playground equipment, and we have rotated through the community, this year, we're, we're on Taylor Park, we had that conversation a few weeks ago, where the equipment was ordered in current budget cycle. Our last park, or excuse me, not our last park, but the park next on our list, is actually Olestee Playground. We are looking at doing some equipment replacement there, it has not had anything, the only hiccup to that is, is that the ownership, we've talked about that in recent years, Rich is actually working on that for us at the moment, because everyone in that family has passed away, there are no, there are no descendants of Ms. Hall, she had no children, and had no brothers and sisters. Unfortunately, Ms. Hall, her mother and father also, before her, never went through probate. So this property is actually in the original owner's name, her grandparents, when they died, her father inherited it, and it did not go through probate and get put into his name. He had ownership for it for most of the time, it exists as a park, and when he died, Ms. Hall did not go through that path either. So now she has passed, so there's a legal hurdle that Commissioner Manz, since this is kind of in his, is in his district, we've had some conversations, Rich is working on that, there is a process in which we can go through to take legal ownership of it, because there's, there is no family to even discuss with at this point. So Rich is working on that, it is our goal to take ownership of that park, so that it can remain a park. But obviously, the replacement of the equipment, there will be contingent that all of that happens. If that does not, Kyler Park is next on our list for upgrades, and so we would just ask to move down the list and come back to Olestee, once we were, if we had the ownership worked out, but I don't think it'll be an issue, it's just the process that we have to go through for that. So again, this is just a repeat funding that we've asked for, as over the last few years, we've done this at King Ruas and Jonesville, and now Taylor Park in current year, so the, so the next, the next park on the list is Olestee. But those are, that total is sixty thousand dollars in capital, and that's the request for the Recreation Park.
I have a question right now, on the park in Olestee, we currently continue to maintain?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So anybody that could kick us off?
Yes, sir.
Well, the only thing I would have is, we don't put any playground equipment on there until it's in the county's name.
I agree with that.
Because I don't want to put it in there and then have to tear it down and have to move it somewhere else.
You're absolutely right.
We agree that we need to go to Kyler next.
Yes, sir.
In the event the property is not in our name, by the time we get the equipment, it goes to God.
Yes, I agree.
Well, and again, I just think proactive, I'm fine with it being there, but if this didn't result in a certain time period, we need to go ahead and make that decision to move it, and let's keep things moving, knowing it's going to come back, because we're still going to get Olestee, we just got to matter when, but I agree with the, with not doing anything until we have ownership, I just want to make sure that we... Nobody can tell us to go get our stuff off now.
You're absolutely right.
I mean, what we have there, because we have, we have some stuff there now, so, okay.
And like I said, legal work on all that, of course.
And becomes our property, there's some more reasons we need to do there, too.
Where at, I'm sorry?
In Olestee.
Oh, yes.
They need a picnic, small picnic area, so.
They do, yes.
There's some things that we need to look at.
Because that is true, that one is one of the parks that is truly in the heart of the community, that gets used, that is...
There would be some other things I'd like to see done.
Build a sidewalk with the state, all the way down there from the stores, all the way down there, because of where it was at.
On that park, because it is very small, you guys know that, and it does have a basketball court, the piece of equipment, the climbing equipment would probably have to be smaller than what we've purchased in years for the three that we've done, just for configuration on the property, so certainly, we can look at picnic tables, and maybe some smaller...
Even that upgrading to basketball, whatever we need to do.
Yes, the forty thousand dollars would go to park upgrades, if not necessarily just one piece of equipment, it would go to that park in itself.
Sounds good, go do on the basketball court or something.
Yes, we would make sure that, from the use of space, that we got the best thing we could put out.
Okay. No, thank you.
Shannon, anything to add?
Shannon, you're doing a good job. Good job. Any other questions on that one for, for the staff and Shannon? If, we'll go into facilities maintenance.
Shannon, you're the only one that gets a number put in on red, as a reduction so far.
Good job, Shannon, bad red.
No, it's a good one, it's a good one.
Well, we just took the red away from it.
He just got, he just got another emergency call.
Hey, just briefly. Shannon does have this budget and your next budget, and as you guys saw, Kayla walked in with lunch just a few minutes ago, so would you guys like to break for lunch?
Let's just finish both of these.
Yes, sir, after Shannon's out.
If he gets a call, then we...
Yes, sir, we can do maintenance, and then Shoals Park, and then break for lunch, I just want to give the other directors a heads up on where our time breaks.
Shoals Park, we'll take lunch. Thirteen thousand seven thirty-two. Where they went, still in red.
They want to, they wanted the same three percent on entry, that idea.
Need somebody to help me read my writing.
I'm swallowing time.
I have too slow.
All right, we got the summary page pulled up there, you guys have a chance to look over that.
It's not red.
No, not red, we have some increases there. Thirteen seven thirty-two increase. Want to go to salaries, you guys still making your notes?
Yes, just move on, I got it.
Shannon, do you want to cover this, or you and me keep going?
That's a dumb question.
Which I'm, the last thing I'm changing with employees is the salary increase.
Yeah, so we've got the three percent raise for everyone in this department, except for one employee, that would be employee number three on this list, number seven six five. So this employee has actually taken on some additional duties in other buildings beyond what he was already servicing. And so, in looking at his salary in comparison to our other janitorial one, which is line number four on that, the salary, you know, had a pretty big discrepancy there in quarters with duty, so we did recommend a salary adjustment for him. So like in previous years, to our new Commissioners, if we, if we have anyone that has a salary adjustment, it's one or the other, we're not proposing a three percent increase and an adjustment. So you'll see some of those that are in the policy adjustment line, that's because that's all they're getting, we wouldn't consider giving them a raise on top of the policy adjustment. So we are asking for a slight pay increase for him to just better align with the duties that he's working with now, otherwise, there's no changes other than the three percent raise for the other employees.
So, the hourly rate that's shown is fourteen fifty-two?
Yes, sir.
Does that include the policy adjustment, or is that prior to the policy adjustment?
No, sir, if you look all the way over on the far column.
Okay, I see it, got you.
The final rate is there, yes. Like I said, that's better aligned with the job that he has stepped into.
And that's due to scope of work?
Yes.
Basically, he's doing more?
He is, yes, sir, he's taken on some other offices that he was not doing before, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
So hit the policy adjustment, plus the three percent, it averages four percent increase. Retirement, it went up seven percent. And then health insurance went up. And then operations, there are no increases.
Good deal.
Capitalism, we're not asking for anything at all?
We, we have a project that we're working on, some numbers, but we don't have all of that, I'm actually looking at Shannon. The gutter system at the Health Department is original to that building, and honestly, it's in pretty bad shape, we've got some leaks that are causing some issues, especially right at the front door. So we did have, we did have a quote provided on that.
But currently, right now, in this capital, in this budget, there's zero dollars for any capital.
Yes, sir.
Last year, we had eleven thousand, eleven and a half thousand for equipment, and only sixty-three for vehicles, but there's, there's nothing here right now, I just want to make sure that I'm not missing something.
No, sir, here it is, Cheryl, I emailed it out.
And right now, that thirteen is just personnel.
The quote that we have on the gutter system is... Question, I'm sorry?
No, I'm missing something, if we got an increase of thirteen thousand for personnel, but our, our capital should have taken a huge decrease in this one, because last year, we had capital... No, what I'm showing, if we're right or wrong, twenty-three twenty-four was eleven, was the capital that was shown at seventy-five, seventy-four, four seventy-eight, but current budget, it does not show anything, so are you telling me, in current year, we had zero capital budget for this department? Are you saying that's not right, or is that, no, we didn't have it?
No, so that shouldn't be accurate, there's capital in there.
Then this, this isn't correct, then? Because the approved budget for twenty-four twenty-five shows zero capital dollars in here, and we show zero in here for the twenty-five twenty-six year, so that it shows nothing, no decrease or increase, but... and we show zero in here for the twenty-five, twenty-six year, so that it shows nothing, no decrease or increase, but.
Hmm? From last year?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, but from last year, there should have been, is what we're saying, should have carried.
Because that's what, my point was is if, if there was money in last year, nothing this year, there should have been a huge decrease in overall capital, seventy-five, but the seventy-four, four, whatever is.
We'll check into that because something's not, something's not capital, I don't know. Cheryl, if, when you're looking at that one for the gutter system, what we're talking about, I'm sorry, let me get back to the right screen here. Sorry, I have two screens in the office and one screen here and I'm trying to get back to the right one. Current year, the Health Department gutter system that we really would like to be able to change out, that it really does need to, need to be done. The quote that we've gotten is, is right at $23,000 for that gutter system. That's a complete replacement on the building. So if the board is in agreement with it, we'd like to, I'd include that instead of, we wanted to make sure it was on this spreadsheet.
Sarah, what about, what about the fair grounds route?
So the fair association's actually done some work on that themselves, it's not leaking at the moment.
Oh, okay. I guess, do we have, have enough days left?
That's because it's not raining at the moment.
Well, at this very moment, it is not raining. In recent, in the last few months, they believe that the problem hasn't.
They've not had a problem.
They have not, no, sir. They, they actually had some, some volunteers that have done a significant amount of work on it in the last couple of weeks and they believe that the, that it's going to hold for now.
So did they fix a ceiling?
They are going to do that as well on their own, not with our money, yes, sir. So, like, so we'd like to see that $23,000 included in this budget. So that, especially there at that front entrance way, it causes the tile at the front door to get wet and obviously, we need to make sure that's not happening where our clients are entering the building now. So again, this is just for budgeting purposes. We did not, we don't have multiple quotes on this, but for budgeting purposes, we've been, we've identified that it's going to take about $23,000 to do one.
For the gutters?
The gutter system at the Health Department, yes, sir. So that would need to be added, Cheryl.
Gutters, go back this time.
What size are the gutters?
Six inch, six inch.
Six inch, twenty-three thousand. I, I would, if we're going to put it in the budget, I'm going to ask for a lot more quotes.
Oh, of course, yes, sir. This was just for budget, budgeting purposes.
Another thing, I, I would also suggest assess where we need gutters.
If it's not.
If it's running down into a flower bed, that's okay. But sometimes we put gutters all across the house just because we want product. Unless, let's focus it on needs. If it's not a problem, then, and it's just aesthetics, that's one thing, but let's make sure we need them, where we're putting them.
Sir.
Anywhere across driveways, doorways, all those kind of things where, I, I would fully agree, but sometimes we put them in places that, y'all can assess that.
I understand, yes. I should bring that twenty-three thousand down too.
That's a lot. That's in the actual Health Department budget, not in maintenance, but yes, there's nothing on maintenance.
So if we put that in there, that'll be a $36,000 increase?
Yep, yep.
I'm just going over my notes to make sure there wasn't anything else left out on that spreadsheet.
This is what I'm going to recommend. Let's, let's do some investigating on, this is not our final budget. It's going to be hard for me to put $23,000 in there for gutter. I know it shouldn't cost that much.
Would you like me to show you the estimate that we've got? I'll email it to you now so you can.
If you'll email it to me, I'm not going to make that decision today, but.
No, sir.
And this. Unless they're gold plated.
I can get with for twenty-three thousand. And are all of them in bad shape or is it just certain areas?
Yes, most of them.
Most of them, just you can see where the rotten's coming through, the rust. Some of it rusted out completely, one is falling back into the doorway. We patched it up, but.
They're holding water. As what it is, they're not installed, they're not draining. They shouldn't hold water and rust.
Right.
So if we were putting them up to begin with, it's not, that's not a problem.
They're, they're original to that building.
That's what I'm saying.
Make sure I'm emailing it to you.
Yeah, email it to me and I'll take a look at it. I'll do a walkthrough on it.
All right.
Me and Shannon.
Got it.
Anything else on that one or just?
I think right now, we can just leave it out of the, out of the budget. And we can, we can address it if we need to at a later time. If that's the board's pleasure, or we can stick twenty-five thousand in, or twenty-three thousand in and then use what we need. Probably maybe you put it in the budget, it might get used for something else.
Yeah.
He wouldn't dare take his bait and switch, would you?
Not by our staff, it's some staff.
Shannon, I, I, I have no objections to trying to make sure we get it funded. We just need to have a realistic number of what it is, you know. And I agree, twenty-three thousand seems a bit high for that, so you put a lot lower number in because we got to do something. If that's, if that's the case, we got to, y'all got to tell us.
I'm not second in responsibility. I just want to make sure we're doing it the right way.
Agreed.
Right.
I would suggest by the next budget cycle, we get, next, when we get the revised, let's have something more realistic. Right, we done.
Sounds good.
Well, so are we good on that one?
Yes. What else you got?
Everything else is payable.
I'm trying to get to the Shoals Park, just to get a part of it. Cheryl, the projected revenue from answering, in case you haven't seen, is $212,000 for September.
Um, we don't have Shoals Park, do we?
That's what she says she's working on, I guess. I thought you sent Shoals Park to her.
Shannon, what do you do with your old mowers when we replace them?
Uh, we still got them. I mean, it's still, still running right now, but we hadn't have any to, that we've done anything we did. Just putting money into it. We got one.
What I don't want to do is get, buy these new mowers. I know we got a good system going and then keep the old ones and still maintenance.
Do you have?
And putting money in. If they get to a point where we put a bunch of money in, we need to get rid of it.
Yeah, we got one.
We, we had to replace the front. It's ironic you mention this because I battle with this with my equipment team all the time. When you budget for replacement, it is to replace one, not add another one to the fleet. And next year, you don't keep getting to replace it again with another new one. It is a replacement, not an addition. If you buy one to replace, the old one's got to go.
What it is, you're going to, you're going to get a new mower and then you still got your maintenance costs and we're not doing benefit by replacing it.
Right.
Because we didn't replace, we added.
We added, so. It's just something to keep in mind. We need to surplus it out, we'll just surplus it out.
We got some surplus happening. There are long mowers yet, but there will be.
I'm just saying.
By the time we're done with them, I just go to the.
Well, and that's the reason we need to get rid of them, not keep them.
That's.
Somebody else's, our junk might be somebody else's treasure there.
That's right. Okay, are we, are we on Shoals Park? What, what are we doing?
Shoals Park, I know, she's finishing up the numbers.
I was just talking while we were waiting. Encouraging. I did what I was saying.
We get on my equipment manager, he's over all the cranes, all the, all of our equipment, right? For all the terminals and everything. Quit hoarding. Every time we get rid of something, well, we may need this one, we, we replaced this generator, but we may need this one for parts. No, no, we don't, you, not, get the parts off, you might need, get rid of it. We're not keeping this, but, but we might, no.
That's hard for people.
He, he, he can't part with someone, he just, he does a great job, but boy, the storage, part storages.
We're just getting it up for you guys.
It's fine. We, we ain't doing nothing but starving.
I know, I sound like a prowler over here.
It's actually early for me. I know we don't eat lunch till two o'clock. After moving in in the morning.
So we're on fifteen and we got to get to forty.
But they don't pay us, that's on a fair creature.
Just got to put it in perspective.
We wanted to pick it up after lunch.
We got four hours, we got to do an average of ten per hour and then after the work, right? Well, we got to do, we got, we're on fifteen, we got twenty-five, we got to do it in four hours. We got to do an average of six per hour. That means we got, we got ten minutes per budget.
Decreasing the timber revenue a little bit from three forty-two down to two twenty. The cash balance is still remaining at two hundred thousand. Requesting three hundred thirty-four thousand, five hundred seventy.
I'm sorry, did you say the, the, did you say about the, the timber sales?
Our, our projection is two twenty, but again, that is what you're looking at on the year prior is actuals. So right now, the timber harvesters are saying that based on current market and what he believes is the, the, the loads that we will have in upcoming year, it's two twenty. But honestly, that's always low. We always see that number come in higher. He always is pretty cautious on what his revenue projections are. But yes, sir, our current estimates for just timber is two twenty into the coming year.
Probably pretty close because the timber market got flooded last year with down trees from hurricanes.
Yes, that's very true.
Right now lumber, or the, or it's weighed, should be, yeah.
So operating expenses is going down forty-four thousand, but capital outlays up sixty-one. Is that what I'm seeing?
Right here on this summary page, yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to talk about them?
So the biggest thing on that reduction on, on operating is that trail maintenance that we were doing. We actually bought some equipment in current year for staff to do that in-house instead of contracting that out. So you'll see that, that's the biggest reduction there is that we've got all those attachments on our mower in current year, so they can go in and do a lot of that trail maintenance themselves.
What's the fee for service?
Well, I'm sorry.
Fee for services, eighteen thousand? Parking attendance?
Probably somebody.
Oh, yes, that is our, our gate attendance.
Yeah. Okay. What, what's the professional services for?
That is for timber management fee. And a park ranger.
Okay, that includes the park ranger?
Yes, sir.
And we pay that to the sheriff's office?
That's correct.
Yes. Okay.
Actually, yes, I'm sorry, that's all that's in that one. Your other contractual is where the other stuff for the timber management.
So the sixty thousand is timber management. We're paying, it's costing us eighty-four thousand dollars for a park ranger?
Yes, sir. That's salary, insurance, retirement, that's his full benefit package. It's not obviously what he's making, but yes, sir. That's his law enforcement. High risk retirement.
Phew.
Yes.
Let me tell you something, ever since we got the new one out there, it's been a change at Shoals Park. He's doing a great job.
Yeah.
Yeah, we ain't had too much stuff going on.
He don't put up with nothing, you know. And they know, and the people know it.
I know it.
I can give him credit, he's out there at different times too. Could have been out there on a Sunday and.
He likes to mix this.
Pull up with him, so.
Any more questions on operating or are we going to move to capital?
No, but I'm, I'm trying to see where's the huge increase in expense? That's what I was trying to.
This one's a noted up here.
Yeah, it's a noted.
I'm sorry, there it is, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
The capital had a increase of sixty.
So on capital, you've got those attachments, we actually leased those. We've got our, our payment that has to be made for all of that. Um, we would like to consider purchasing a drone. So we have a lot of staff time that goes into patrolling the park for various reasons that could be cut down significantly with the use of that wildfire. Shannon has to do a lot of time out there with those types of things too, because he and Tom are actually wildland firefighters with our fire department. They've been trained and certified to do all of that. So the drone would be able to be used for search and rescue. We've had people that were lost and we are up and down every trail until we find them. At night, when the park needs to be closed, you know, you have to, if, if the gate attendance not there and it's staff doing it, then you've got to patrol that park to make sure there's nobody left in there. So there's a lot of different uses that we would use for that drone. So they have asked for one of those to be added to their budget. You can see that beneficial in saving staff time and being more understanding of what's happening in the park on a quicker, quicker timeline.
So, so let's back up a second. Unless I'm mistaken, I've also heard the request that's coming from, from GIS, whatever IT, what does it describe wanting a drone as well?
Theirs would, would have a different, it's a LiDAR, for LiDAR.
It's, it's not, it's an additive on, but they could still, the LiDAR one could do the same thing this one could do.
I mean, we, we could consider that. I, I would have to get with them to see what exactly their, their needs are versus the other department, how often it would need to be used, but we could certainly consider it.
And, and do, does the sheriff not have drones?
He does.
He does, but they're not.
If we've got somebody lost out in that park, I'm sure it's not just Shannon and the team and our recreation folks looking for just a lost person.
Um, if, if, we've had, I'm willing to say this way, we've had not anybody ever lost at law enforcement, had to be called and some search had to be done. But we've had an elderly couple that got lost out there and finally got a signal. And actually, Shannon ended up stumbling upon them out there looking for them. They had been lost and just been in circles out there. So of course, if there was a true need for a law enforcement, oh, without doubt, the sheriff's office would send their people there.
My point is, well, I see the request, I, this is a hard one for me to approve a drone. We get, we keep getting items from drone requests because sometime, I don't know how it is here, but I know we have drones at the port, but we have to have certified, you have to have, person flying them have to be certified and all these kind of things to do so. It's not just a recreation thing that you can run out and buy one. If you're in government, you got to have, and furthermore, there's restrictions in governments on what type of drones you can buy.
Yes, sir.
And some strong restrictions on some of those. I, I don't know if they'd apply here, but, but I, I think, again, I know there's been a request, or I know that's been one of the items that's been brought up from development ops to whatever, to IT to, to get one for those purposes, but these things can be shared. We don't need to have multiple drones in the county that's ninety-eight percent of the time they're sitting in a box or so forth, so that one I'm going to have a little bit of a challenge with.
Okay. Um, moving on down into our list, the payment kiosks that are there on site have been problematic. Honestly, since they were put in, they have not been, they're down more than, than they're up. And the company that services them is, is not even located in America. Their service technicians want to try to fix things over the phone with our guys and it, let's say that is, plus the age of them, not only are we having functional, you know, issues with them, but the age of those, those kiosks now are, are up there. So we would like to replace those, those, we have one at each entrance, so the total for that is forty thousand dollars. Initial pricing on those is about twenty thousand dollars apiece, which is in line. I think we paid about fourteen thousand dollars for each one of those and we bought them well.
Eight years ago?
I'm sorry, eight years ago, not twelve years ago. Eight years ago, so that's in line with what we believe it would cost, based on our, our research. So we are asking for the replacement of both of those payment kiosks. I said a total of forty thousand dollars. And one thing that we'd like to look at, we are, are using Shoals Park for a lot of, of events, community events, as well as just people in general that are using it. And so one thing that we would like to see is some playground equipment installed near the parking lot. And so we have forty thousand dollars identified to be able to do that with.
What, what's the revenue that's brought in from the kiosk?
Cheryl's got a tab on that, there's, it's not updated for this year, Cheryl, but.
Or collected through side of tenants? Because you're paying.
Yes, sir, so we get it, we get the entrance fee, she'd be able, she could pull that up for you. So that will be in addition to the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in revenue from timber.
While she's pulling that up, I'm going to tell you what I think.
Twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars is in timber sales.
How much? And do you have those?
Twenty-five thousand.
Do you have those broke down by sides?
I can break it down, I can download it and break it down.
No, I just didn't know if you had that. I'm going to, this is my recommendation, that we put one kiosk in every year for the next two years, but the first one we put in is on the one that makes the money, which is your ATV side. The horse side and the walking is not used one-third what ATV is. So that would help our budget with twenty thousand dollars, because if you're not going to be between two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in timber sales this year, you're going to be cutting your budget mighty close next year. So I would recommend one this year, one next year. I'm, I'm, I agree with Commissioner Bennett on the drone, I just don't think that that's an expense that the park needs to have right now. I'm, I'm, I agree with Commissioner Bennett on the drone, I just don't think that that's an expense that the park needs to have right now. Uh, 'cause I'm looking at the overall budget for the next two years, and it don't look good with the timber sales at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. To me, the deputy's a lot more important. Can't make any cuts here. It's not like we can make a whole lot of cuts on this budget. I know it's a self-sustained budget, but it's not where you wanna drain it dry.
Oh, of course.
So I'm gonna recommend that you drop twenty thousand dollars for, uh, one of your... And then twenty thousand dollars, or your eight thousand for the drone. I think we can dual-purpose the one, if we, even if we approved the one here for the county, I'm not sure that's gonna happen yet. And all, the playground equipment, I think that's a good idea. I think that a lot of people would more utilize it more, just taking their kids out and enjoying the playground side, fishing in the lake.
Yes, sir.
The people who don't wanna ride can actually enjoy the park also, a picnic bunch, so I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
But the kiosk, and one thing I'm talking about the kiosk, is I don't wanna buy another kiosk, and we have the same flipping problems we have with these two since we've had them. And in one year, we can figure out if it's any good or not, and then the next year, we can decide if we wanna buy that one or a different one.
Yes, sir.
Because they all serve the same function, and it's all automated, so it doesn't matter if you got two of the different kind. So when we buy one this time, let's do some research on it.
We actually could get some service for it.
Right.
And we've always, it seems like there was...
As part of the purchase, as part of the...
It was out for so long.
As part of the purchase, there needs to be a service contract, minimum service for a minimum period of time to balance out. If we drop in twenty grand on a kiosk, that needs to come with a service agreement for at least five years to know if this is down. They've got so many hours, or so many days to have repaired, or else we start, we start divvying them. They gotta be, there's, because we're spending money, and we had, we had kiosks down for a long time. And lost revenue, 'cause they were down, and couldn't get people. So, I, I, I agree, but we need to do research to make sure that, I agree with your approach one at a time. But it'd be pretty bad if we put in one at twenty grand, and it's got the same problems, and we're sitting here, and we can put a second one in, but the first one's still a problem. So, it's, consistency's gonna be really important, so I, I would agree with that.
The technology has, has, has leaps and bounds different in what it was eight years ago with these things. You've seen these all over the place.
I guess, I guess, I guess where I'm, yeah, what I struggle with is, you go to the airport, it's, you, it's automatic pay. You stick your ticket in, come out. It's automatic pay.
Right.
I just went up to, of the, of Ocean Pond last week. I buy an annual pass there. I go up to the kiosk, I punch it in, it gives me the receipt. Now, I have to mail the receipt in to get my little ticket, but until then, I, it, it's really simple and it all, every time I've been up there, it's worked. So I, the technology's there, we just gotta get the right equipment.
And I can tell you, while you're doing your research, if you have an annual pass member, and they have their credit card attached to the machine, it'll automatically bill them right then. It don't have to do nothing. And actually, they have tag readers. One little camera's right behind it, when they pull up, it reads the tag, and the gate thing opens, and they go on in. You don't even have to have an attendant. There is a lot of options.
Yes, sir. A lot more than we have when we bought these eight years ago.
So when you're doing your investigation, you know that there's a lot more options than just sticking your card in, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I need, I wanna switch, I wanna switch from the kiosk, but you go ahead and go, if you're on the kiosk.
Yeah, I'm on the kiosk real quick. My, my takeaway with just the kiosk is, we made twenty-four thousand nine sixty-four last year with, in fees. Now that didn't take into account the eighteen thousand, or the eighteen thousand that it costs to have the attendant at the gate. And then we're adding a twenty thousand dollar kiosk, so we're at thirty-eight thousand. We're gonna be in the deficit of fourteen thousand this coming year. So if we do the twenty thousand, will that cut down on the eighteen thousand of fees?
No, sir, 'cause those data tenants don't sell tickets. They just, they, uh, open and close the park, and they monitor the people to make sure that they're compliant with our, our tire size, our noise.
And making sure that they pay?
And they do make sure they pay, yes, but we would be able to reduce the staff from that, unfortunately.
We, the, the way the park's set up and, and is, there's not a gate arm that stops you, that you can't go in.
Yeah.
So if the tenant happens to step away, or happens to go to the restroom, happens to go whatever, somebody can literally drive them past you.
Sure.
Right? However, when an attendant is there, you get a whole lot better utilization rate of payments than you do otherwise. And, and it do help enforce the requirements, so...
They check coolers and make sure no one's bringing in alcohol, and the tire size, the baffles, and then the spark arresters, all those things that they're checking on that equipment when they're coming through there, too. So not just, they don't physically take the money. They, if they need help with the payment kiosk, they show people how to use it, but they're not there to just to take the payment.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want them collecting money that is going to, but what is, I think, from, just from a perspective on that, we've gone through so many different iterations here. Having the attendants there is kinda like at the, our dumpster sites. Whenever we have somebody there, they, the dump, it's amazing how the trash actually goes in the dumpsters.
Yeah.
And same thing with these, having somebody there.
Yeah, I was saying that.
It changes a lot about the dynamics of who's out there, what happens, and the place that we get. Right. I, I, Shannon, I wanna put it on the radar to be like, looking at, and if it's not this year, I'm fine, but within the next year or two. The parking lot has got massive bumps and waves in it from just over the years. So we gotta, at some point, look at, what are we doing to address, taking some of that out, recreating it and, and paving it back? Because there are getting to be some pretty rough areas through that parking lot area on the, on the ATV side.
I have talked to the road department about it in the past, with the last people that were then. We got it planned out.
Okay, y'all just look at what it is. My, my other thing with that is, we're gonna use road department to do it. We've got to make sure the road department is, that effort's been reversed from the, the park thing. It needs to be a park expand, not a road department. But, but just make sure that at some point, that that is being addressed as well.
It is pretty bad.
Okay.
Okay?
So the road was to take off the drone?
Take off the drone and one kiosk.
That was my opinion, I, that's up to the rest of the board.
I agree.
I, I agree with them.
I'm hoping forty thousand dollars for playground equipment is a bunch of equipment.
That'll be the install also.
It ain't much.
It's, have you seen them little pieces of equipment? They, geez.
About half of that is, is the state requires a certified playground installer and certain types of ground cover. So about twenty thousand of that will go specifically to ground cover and installation, and about twenty thousand of it for...
That's crazy, and then you get one piece of equipment.
It's, it's, this idea that we can run out and throw up some monkey bars? No, it just doesn't work that way. The state requirements makes it almost impossible to create a park.
Okay, so we've made the changes on that live stream.
What, what's our total at the summary page?
Reduction.
Uh, of course, is the...
It's a reduction of ten thousand seven hundred thirty-three, uh, thirty-three, and then a negative three point four.
So basically, no increase.
Between recreation facilities and Shoals Park, we add an increase of three thousand dollars.
Good work, Shannon.
Good job, Shannon. Go buy yourself some lunch.
You're, you're in number two.
I tell you what, if you'll stick around, we'll give you a firehouse up.
You're, you're in position number two, Tony Essling, I think, come in a little bit better.
April come in.
No, she had it.
I think Tony's was...
Tony was.
Yeah, April did five hundred dollar increase.
Right.
Yeah, but then she had eight, eighty-nine hundred after that, so don't, don't forget that one.
All right, we wanna break for lunch?
Yep.
It's here.
This, this summary sheet here, do we have that in an Excel format?
We're gonna take it thirty minutes.
Please. Says the listing.
So thirty minutes good for everybody?
Thirty minutes for lunch.
I don't think mine's, uh... I think, let me, let me look before I take you down. But yes, sir, thirty minutes, I think, will be plenty for lunch.